Fort Lauderdale will be hosting its meetings in a virtual format until further notice. Public can listen to and view virtual meetings at fortwaterdale.gov/FLTV and on youtube.com/cityoffortwaterdale as well as on Comcast channel 78 and AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99. Those who want to speak on an agenda item and have not already signed up to do so, please visit www.fortwaterdale.gov/viasinvictus，请 sign up. To help ensure the same decorum as in our in-person meetings, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. One, please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, destructive, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Two, while you are on the phone waiting for your opportunity to speak, please mute the meeting broadcast on FLTV, YouTube, Comcast, or AT&amp;T if you're watching simultaneously. In order to avoid delays with broadcast, I will call on you when it is your turn to speak and also notify you when your time has expired. City staff has automatically added speakers in the two listening lines and you will be unmuted when you are recognized. Once you have completed your speaking, you will be muted and may either hang up to exit the meeting or stay connected to listen to the remainder of the meeting. Is that clear, everybody?
That's clear.
Okay, very good. Welcome, everybody. Nice to see we're all together here again. So let us begin our meeting with our commission reports. So we'll start out with you, Commissioner Maritas. Do you have anything to report on today?
Sure, just a couple of updates on what I've been doing around. I went to the Borough League of Cities meeting last week and I just want to update you all. We sent a communication to the county commission opposing the charter amendment that will be on the ballot that gives the county the ability to come in and develop anywhere they want without getting our permission. The county did vote to allow that to go on the ballot. So now at the Borough League of Cities meeting, we did discuss getting together and communicating an education piece, kind of why we don't think this charter amendment is a good idea. So I just want you to know that.
That's just on transportation, county transportation projects, right?
Correct. County transportation projects can come in and be developed without getting the permission from the different cities that they would go through. So if you vote yes, then you're voting yes, you would allow the county to come in and do what they want. So the Borough League of Cities is against it and we were against it also. So I just want you all to know that that is coming on the ballot. Let's see, met with the Lockhart team last week. So excited about finally talking about the park again and what we're going to do and moving forward. The park, you know, according to the comprehensive agreement, we do have two years left to design and build the park. So hopefully we make that happen. We're also doing it, you know, with a parallel path with the community center that we're building there and we're getting the final rounds of community input, citywide community input. ACOM will lead that, those efforts this fall. So once ACOM goes out to the city and gets any input for what else we may want at this park, because it will be a citywide park, then they'll finalize those plans. Once we get the plans finalized, then we'll tie in all the park space too. So I think we're hopefully on path to get that complete in a couple of years and I know Chris and everyone are working on that too. So I appreciate that. Let's see, I don't know. Lockhart, are they playing with fans yet, Chris? Did they say they're moving forward with fans once we went into phase two? I guess.
No, I think that they've taken the position they're not ready to do that yet.
Okay, so they're still playing, but just no fans, I guess, this season. Okay, Water Trail, looking forward to our first meeting with Commissioner Sorenson. Of course, got that planned right away, so thank you for that. We'll meet this week and probably every week, I'm anticipating, right? Steve, you did it. I try to make it like once a month. I think we're once a week now, but that's okay. At least we can Zoom, I'm on it.
We'll give you some breaks here and there. We'll give you some breaks.
Now looking forward to that. I'm super excited about this. And I want to thank Kim Pearson and Chris Cooper for joining my District One meeting yesterday. They gave us an update about the tree ordinance. A lot of my neighbors are a little bit concerned, not about the ordinance, they're excited about it, a little bit more about the process, just making sure that their input is being reflected with the revisions that I guess the city attorney's office has right now. And then we'll get those revisions back. We'll look at it before it comes to us as a commission. So I want to thank staff, I want to thank the city attorney's office for getting those revisions back to neighbors so that they can give input and they are looking forward to having a tree ordinance. So that's about it for me, thank you.
Hey, great, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, everybody. A pleasure to be with you all again. Very quickly, a lot's still going on throughout the district. Very excited about all the neighborhood meetings that are still happening virtually. Tuesday, September 8th, I met with the South Middle River folks. Wednesday, the 9th, the next night, Sabo Bend Civic Association meeting. And I want to thank staff for coming and giving the updates on the historic preservation ordinance rewrite that they've been working on for the last few years. Thursday, September 10th, it was a pleasure to see inside the Cisthunk Marketplace. Mayor was there also and what a great little venue that is. I really look forward to when we get to the other side of this pandemic and it can really be open to a lot of people. But they've been doing an excellent job controlling the number of people there. You have to have a reservation to get in. The array of food booths and it's just really a nice setup and a beautiful, beautiful venue, Cisthunk Marketplace. Obviously, we all gathered. I'm sure the mayor will talk about the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new monument on 9/11 on the Riverwalk. What a beautiful spot and so well done. So congratulations to everyone at Riverwalk for that. Last night after our budget hearing, I joined the Lauderdale Beach Homeowners Association meeting. Always a great group and very engaged and I enjoyed that time as well. Tomorrow I will be participating. I'm with the artist selection panel for the Andrews Avenue Bridge and we're narrowing down the folks that we've been screening for the artwork on the Andrews Avenue Bridge. This Thursday, I'll be attending the Education Advisory Board meeting. We'll be talking about Bennett Elementary School and perhaps getting a brand new school at that location in Pointcetta Heights. Monday, September 21st, I'll be attending the Progressive Village Civic Association meeting. The next night, the 27th, the South Middle River Civic Association meeting. On the 23rd, we have a TMA board meeting coming up in the morning. Just a couple of comments. Chris, again, are we moving forward on the Central Beach Master Plan? How's that coming?
Yes, we are. That was an update that we were going to get from Anthony Faris. Let me go to Anthony here on the... Let's see if I can spot him. There he is. We'll get him to come to the meeting. He's unmuted.
Is this the one we began in 2003, Commissioner?
I think it was 1964.
Anthony, are you there?
Yes, I am. I apologize, I was having trouble with my audio. What was the question?
But how are we doing with the Central Beach Master Plan?
Oh, we're still moving forward with it. We have some language that's been drafted. We just want to do some additional outreach and get input on it. So right now, because of COVID and some of the associations not meeting, But, you know, as soon as we can, we'll continue to push forward.
Do we have any timeline in mind, Anthony, or?
The timeline has changed. I'd have to get an update. I don't really have anything in front of me to kind of confirm what that would be right now.
Okay.
But we're definitely behind, I'll say that.
Okay, well, I would love for us to be able to reengage with that again and I think that I look forward to that as soon as that can happen. So thank you for that.
Okay, we'll put together some information and give you a perspective update on the timeline so you have it.
Okay, great. I would appreciate that. Chris, I know I mention this almost at every meeting, but I'm getting asked this a lot and I feel really bad for these businesses. But what is happening with the dollars that are going to be going out to folks in the CRA? That we have the Business Assistance Plan. I mentioned that program, I was hoping we could do this. I mentioned it back in July. We did do it and I think, no, actually, I mentioned it like in May or June. July was the deadline, I think the end of July for people to apply. And now we're almost in the third week of September. What's the status of that? I see Clarence is right there. So if we can just get a status on that, because I get asked this a lot and folks really would like to see some assistance.
Yeah, so let me start and I'll hand it over to Clarence. I asked the same question as Reese did yesterday and today. And unfortunately, what I find is that there's a lot of bureaucratic red tape in the distribution of these funds. So I would like to think we're not making that more difficult. And that's, you know, I've pushed our folks to put more resources on it and get these dollars into the community. So Clarence, let's give the Vice Mayor an update.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor Glasson. What's happening currently is that we kind of took a step back because of your directive in trying to allow for more businesses to be able to participate. Since the initial, the initial applications, we only had about 13, actually 11, out of Central City that actually applied or made the second round of the program. After going through that whole process, we only found that one business would have actually qualified based on the criteria that was already set. So it was our intent to come back to the board to allow for there to be a relaxing of the requirements and the criteria. But it was then suggested that if we do it for Central City, we should do it for everybody in all of the areas, meaning Northwest and including the CDBG applicants. So at this time, we have one from Central City that we are going to be, you know, contacting. Actually, we've already made contact, but we'll be able to disperse money to that one particular business. But what we need to understand is when we bring back the legislation, what is the Board of Commissioners' desire as far as going back out? Whether we go to those that have been denied or do we just put it out all over again to allow for everybody to get the application and start that process again?
Well, let me ask you this. Have any of the businesses that applied, and I know that there were a few hundred, I believe, have they been communicated with so they understand these delays? Or they understand what you're going through internally? Or because it's, I mean, it seems to be a very frustrating process that I don't know maybe why we didn't figure out maybe some of these possibilities of problems before the application was sent out or we didn't anticipate some of the, you know, issues that we're facing now. But I know that they need to have that communication, but I'm also very concerned about the actual assistance that they also desperately need. How do you see this playing out in terms of a timeline or actually getting funds into people's hands?
So again, we already prepared the cam and the legislation to come back before the board to relax the requirements. We had prepared notices for those that were going to get declination letters. We stopped, we held off on that because the majority of the ones that we were going to send out declination letters were declined because they already received assistance. So if the idea is that we're going to allow for other, for those businesses who've received assistance from other, whether it's other, whether it's PPP or whether it's state funds, we're going to allow for that. We didn't want to send out those letters knowing that we were then going to change the program. So we didn't, we didn't reach out to them. We still have those letters prepared. But once we are able to come back and have that approved and we, hopefully, it'll be at the next Board of Commissioners' meeting. We can have the modifications to the program approved. Then from there, you know, again, what is your desire? You tell us that you want us to just reach out to those that have been declined, which is still only about 11, 11 businesses or 10 businesses. Or do you want us to put it out again to everybody that potentially could give us a whole lot more people or businesses that potentially could receive funding? Because we are sure that most didn't apply because they've already received other funds. Now, there's one thing complicating, there's one other thing that's complicating this. In the PPP or the CARES Act, there is a prohibition against receiving funds from multiple agencies. And that was just made aware to me today. I was just made aware of that today by Rachel and I don't know if Rachel was on the call. But there's a prohibition in the CARES Act that says if you receive funds from one agency, then, you know, you're not eligible to, or you shouldn't receive it from another. So that's going to kind of complicate where you want to go if you want us to then loosen the requirements to allow for people who have already received funds from whether it's PPP or other agencies that are making monies available, you know, for distressed businesses. You know, you need to, you need to kind of give us some guidance as to how you want us to make this happen and we can get the money out on this.
Clarence, Clarence, hey, this is Chris. So, you know, I can give you that guidance and I can, I can jump in and give you that guidance this afternoon. I don't think that that needs to be a matter of policy at this point. I think that we can make that as an operational decision in the city. So let's, this is important and we need to, we need to move it forward and we need to move it forward quickly. So we'll add it to our discussion for later this week, but we'll need to bring back to the Commission.
Right.
We just need to bring back what we want to do.
No, and thank you for expediting that. That would be greatly appreciated. And when it does come back to the Commission, if you could just do us a favor and in the backup, let us know, you know, how many applicants? Let us know what issues were outstanding with so many of the applicants that you're finding a problem with. You know, just give us as much detail as possible so we don't have to try and, you know, flesh that out ourselves. That would be really helpful.
Can I interject here, Mr. Vice Mayor? Clarence, this is, this is becoming embarrassing. You know, these businesses have been struggling for weeks, if not months, and we're still, we're still bouncing around eligibility and applicability and rules and things like that. And, you know, and I realize that we have to have guidelines. But the last meeting we had, you had indicated to the Commission that people would start getting checks by the end of that week. And here we are, still fumbling over issues that, you know, I agree with the Vice Mayor, these things should have been resolved before. You know, we have to look at it from the community's point of view that there are businesses that are going to go under if we don't help them out. And I appreciate the city manager chiming in here and saying, "Try to work these issues out this week." But, you know, a handful of businesses have applied. Then give it to them. If they're eligible, then give it to them. Why would you wait to, to want to enlarge the number of eligible businesses and deny the first round the money that they need? This makes absolutely no sense. You know, people are struggling and hurting.
Well, not only that, when I first brought up this issue, when I noticed that Hallandale Beach was doing this and then I suggested that we replicate this for our city and then we went forward with it. Hallandale Beach has distributed funds a long, long time ago. So I don't understand why we're in this position right now.
Well, forgive me if I misled you to believe that they're holding and waiting to distribute the checks, waiting on, you know, us to make a decision about modifying or amending the program. We, for those that we do have and we have approved, the manager has signed on the number, he signed off on a number of the agreements and the notes. And we are processing those. We should have about 12, which are not, it's not totally inclusive of Central City. Like I said, Central City is only one. But with the Northwest, we have about 12 that will be getting checks. So we're not waiting.
When? When? We thought that was happening at the last meeting. You told us they'd be getting checks by the end of that week. You know, these people can't wait.
Again, again, the process requires that we send, we send the application or the agreements and notes to the businesses. We have to wait on them to return them to us. And once we return, once they're returned to us, then we get it over to the manager, the manager then signs. I guess we should, we should make some allowance for, you know, the mail and transit. But yeah, we thought that those who have been approved would have gotten the applications back to us right away. But we, we don't get them right away. We're still waiting on a number of applicants to send back the agreements and the notes. We have about 17 in the Northwest that haven't even been, haven't even responded to our first communication to send them back to us, to send the information to us. So it's not totally, it's not that we're sitting around just twiddling our thumbs, waiting for people to send us documents. We've been reaching out and we've been asking them to send us the documentation so that we can verify their eligibility. And if they meet the program guidelines, we will, you know, go ahead and process the payment for them to get the money.
Are there deadlines listed on these applications or when you write to them asking for information?
Yes, yes, they had a week to submit. They had a week to submit the information and they don't submit the information and then we have to extend it. So they're just not being responsive. That's the problem with it. Of 40, of 40 applications that HCD had, only three have been responsive, 40, of 40. Only three have been responsive. So out of the 103 that we're talking about, we've been able, that were approved on the initial round and that first round of prequalifications, only about 15 have been responsive. It's not that we're sitting and waiting and we have been reaching out. We have been reaching out.
So what happened to the 15? What happened to the 15 then? Where is, where are they in this process?
Well, that's what I, that's what I just mentioned to you. About 12, eight have, eight have already been signed off on. Four, four more are being routed to the manager. We have three that were declined even on the second round. And then we have one that's actually on my desk. So about 17 that have actually gone through the process.
Okay.
And that's just, that's just the Northwest. I'm sorry?
I was just asking the Vice Mayor if he had any more questions of you.
No, I'm just finding it a frustrating process, that's all, so.
All right. All right, do you have any more?
I happened to Vice Mayor since Hallandale seemed to get it right. I happen to know somebody from Hallandale that was a part of their process in getting that money out. So we're going to make some connections here internally to see if we can get through some.
And also, Hallandale started three months before we did it as well, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clarence.
I only have one more thing, Mayor, thank you. Chris, and this is for you because I'm getting questions about this. It started after the first budget hearing and then after last night and some neighborhoods are concerned. I know that last night in the budget, we basically defunded the MPO into local agreement. We're talking about a little bit over a half a million dollars and then adding it back for funding to build back our Transportation and Mobility Department. I know we went round and around on this, you know, last, last budget hearing. If I, if I remember correctly, I actually raised a lot of these concerns in terms of conflicts of interest, in terms of how is this going to work? How is it going to work with the county? How is it going to work with the other cities? Because I was hearing this a lot from my neighborhoods with regards to who they had been working with on transportation and mobility projects. So it looks like that, that my prediction did come true. And I would just like to be able to get, well, I mean, I didn't get much support from my colleagues, if I remember correctly. I think I was alone on that prediction and my worries about the issues. But Chris, just for public transparency's sake, because people do have a lot of questions, they want to know what we're doing, I would just request that we get some sort of memo so that we are transparent on this and we explain what happened. Why did we do what we did with the budget? Why was that money removed from the ILA? In other words, what warranted this change right now with that agreement? And just so that all of those facts are out on the table for people to digest. And then also, if we can, just to lay their fears that this is going to cause any disruption and anything that they've expected in their neighborhoods. But that would be really greatly appreciated if we could do that, Chris.
Sure, yeah, do you want me to address any of that today or do you want it in the form of a memo?
I mean, it's a, I mean, it would be good, the memo would be good because we could certainly share it. If you could give us the, you know, maybe the shorthand version now and maybe more detail in the memo. I think people would just really appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, so I'll just give you a real high level overview at this point. And really, at this, at this juncture, it's, it's in the process of making several calculated decisions so that we don't lose our ability to collect cert tax funds moving forward. And so there's really nothing that's been set in stone and really no predictions have either come true or not at this point. It's more just putting ourselves in a position where when cert tax dollars are distributed that I don't even for two seconds, you know, be concerned that we're not eligible for them. So the process by which cert tax dollars are being distributed is changing by the day. And then this whole second ILA with the county that talks about maintenance projects versus capital projects. What we chose to do is position ourselves such that if we needed to take over the cert tax projects in Fort Lauderdale, that we could and that we didn't put at risk any of our funding. So we'll reduce that to writing. I can tell you and I can tell the public that there will be no level of service change and that if we were being served before, we will continue to be served going forward. We just are blocking against the possibility that the county would take the position that the MPO in delivering upon our cert tax projects might have a conflict. That doesn't mean we can't work with the MPO going forward. And Greg and I have talked about how we work on a task order basis as opposed to a contract basis. So there's lots of moving parts. But to just put a period on it, no service expectation changes. We will be able to receive cert tax dollars from Broward County and we will continue to be in the transportation planning business. So it may look a little bit different, but it certainly won't result in the public receiving less service.
So what's happening to the people that were assigned to us by district from the MPO? Are they still going to be working with us or no?
Potentially. But at this point, I think Greg has moved them into other positions within the MPO itself. So there's, you know, an opportunity that we might continue to work with one or more of them, but that, those decisions haven't been made yet.
And then are we going to actually be rescinding the ILA?
If at some point we need to, to be able to receive cert tax dollars, then yes, that would be the path we would take forward.
And monies that we've already given to the MPO, how does that play out?
Well, the MPO has delivered upon some projects already. So Greg is working with Ben Rogers to put together a list of equitable projects that they've done and what money is owed for those projects that were performed. And then we would just transition to where we would spend those dollars rather than spending them with the MPO. We'd spend them within our own organization to continue delivery on cert tax projects.
Okay, and how many people are we anticipating hiring now back to the city for the Transportation and Mobility Department?
My memory is going to get the best estimate here, but I think it's four.
Okay. All right, great. No, I thank you for that overview and, you know, as much detail as we can get out so that the public is, you know, fully understanding the change. I really appreciate that. Thank you, Chris. That's it for me, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, but before we go on to Commissioner Okay, but before we go on to Commissioner McKenzie, are there any other predictions of the future that you'd like to share with us today?
You know, it takes me, it's a lot of energy, it's a lot of mental stress so that, you know, I can't keep these coming so often, but as soon as I get another one, you're going to be the first one to know.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Yes, I'm going to do the best I can, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner McKenzie?
I do not have a report, but I do want to make a comment. Since our meeting yesterday with the budget, I have received numerous emails and phone calls about the stormwater assessment that we, we approved yesterday. So just want to let you know that, thank you.
I can respond to.
What in particular?
Yes, I've gotten calls to, in my office today, wanting to go through the appeal process that we articulated last night. So if you get people that want to appeal, please send them our way. We're going to work with each and every one of them.
Okay, great, Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you, Mayor. Feliz mes de la descendencia hispana. De nuevo cada año de septiembre y octubre celebramos la belleza, belleza de la diversidad de la cultura hispana en la ciudad de Fort Lauderdale. So.
So you're commenting about how this is the beginning of Hispanic History Month?
Very nice, yes, and what month is it? It's two months, I guess.
Is it two months?
Septiembre y octubre. This is better than Rosetta Stone right here. Muchas gracias.
Is this the same commission or the Security Council of the UN? I can't figure out where we're at today, okay, go ahead.
No problema. Fantastic. Yeah, just want to celebrate that, lift that up. You know, we just live in this amazingly diverse city where we celebrate all types of diversity and this is an important part in understanding the heritage of it as well. So, so I want to mention that. And then one other just positive news I wanted to share, Mayor, it's a little bit of a lengthy email, but I want to share this email. This is an email written from, written by a formerly homeless man, a member of our community here, who was helped tremendously by city manager Chris Lagerbloom and Angela Blaine. And I just want to read this, that this came in the other day. This, this gentleman says, "Last Sunday, we moved into our new home. We apologize in advance for not writing you on Monday." This is an email sent to Chris. "To be quite frank, this has been so beautifully overwhelming that we did need some time to truly be able to put into words what you have all done for our family. First off, Mr. Lagerbloom, the very first day I wrote the email, you didn't hesitate to pick up the phone and contact myself, my boss, and other helpful people to turn my whole life around. You took me off the streets within 12 hours and changed what had become my routine of living as a homeless man. I literally slept on the side of the library every night and woke up and went to work and did that day after day. So many times I thought I can get a little studio or room, but I would no longer be able to provide for my daughter. So I just kept doing what I needed to do as a man and a dad. If you didn't help me the way you have, none of this would have been possible. You've not only allowed to get the wheels turning, but I found out that you also followed my case and stayed on top of my situation. I don't know how to ever repay you. You also need to know that because of you, I get to fall asleep next to my daughter every night. I'm not just providing financially for what my daughter needs. You made it possible to live daily with her. I'm able to read stories to her when I come home from work and eat dinner together as a family. She runs screaming daddy when I walk in the door. I will never take for granted or forget what you've done for my family. There were other people I must thank during this process that helped every step of the way. Without them, I wouldn't be where I am today. Angela Blaine has taken time from her weekend to come in and help me. She has called me many times to guide and assist me. She works so hard and goes above and beyond in what she can do. Her compassion and knowledge has helped me in more ways than I can tell you. We feel a special connection to her. She's a wonderful human being and a kind soul. You put me in contact with Rapid Re Housing. Somehow we got the very best caseworker. She's taken so much time to go over what we needed. She helped talk to landlords when they had no idea what Rapid Re Housing was. She worked hard for us. We know caseworkers have a job to do, but she always took extra time to help us. When I started my new job, I realized I found my career. Yes, a little late in life, but it's what I love. My new boss has never once made me feel less or bad for where I came from. I found out through this how much compassion he has. I'll always work hard for him and try to be a good employee. All of, all of you the last few months brought a loving family together. We have not stopped smiling since we moved into our new home. We're so grateful for you. We will, you will always be such a big part of our lives, thank you. So just wanted to share that as just, you know, when we commit $750,000 to help homeless and homeless services, you know, that has a face, it has an impact. And we, through city staff, day in, day out, are literally changing lives, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that. That kind of segues into something I wanted to bring up, which is about the emergence of encampments and the presence of homeless people and panhandlers in certain areas in our community that have especially become worsened by the COVID-19 pandemic. We continue to hear people complain about what's going on at the corner of Federal Highway and 17th Street, Causeway, certainly the area around the county library, and there are other places as well. We need to, we need to, we need to find solutions there. And, and I mean, I put it out to the commission as to what we need to do at this point. You know, I, I will contact the sheriff to ensure that people who are discharged from the, from the county jail are not just being put out onto our streets. I'm going to make calls to other mayors throughout the county where I hear people are being just transported from one part of the county to downtown Fort Lauderdale just to, just to eradicate their homelessness by, by giving them a place here. Does anyone have any thoughts about where we, you know, next steps forward? Because many of our, many of our efforts have been frustrated by COVID. I understand the community court is back in business, so that's a good thing. I guess it's meeting tomorrow again for the, for the first time, Chris, the second time.
Yeah, let's go to help an update on community courts. It's either tomorrow or Thursday. Hal, can you join the meeting, please?
Yes, sir, thank you, Chris. Hal Barnes, member of support. The community court, we're working towards a virtual environment. We're setting up a tent and the equipment at Holiday Park. We're actually tying it into the testing location so that as a client comes in, we can test them with the 15-minute results. They can then go through the court proceedings. And then we're trying to develop the partnership to go further with the county so that as they leave the court that day, if they're not already in a shelter or in some, some kind of housing program, that we could work with the county to actually take them either to the congregate or non-congregant shelter. We're trying to go live next Wednesday. I understand the judge may be pushing it back to the following Wednesday, but we'll definitely be doing it live from Holiday Park in two weeks. We did a test case last week. The communication tools are working great. We were able to connect into all the providers and the judge in the court system were very happy with communications. So that's the direction we're going in with community court, sir.
So Hal, do you have any, any action plan, for example, that we could, that this community could expect to see some effort to try to eliminate the problem at 17th Street, Causeway?
The 17th Street, the 17th Street, Causeway situation, it's a result of panhandling. It's a very popular area. It's heavily traveled by tourists, either going to the beaches, to the cruise port, to the airport. And we, I talk to the outreach officers almost every day. There's a group that congregate there during the day. At night, they do sleep in the area, they disperse themselves. But the biggest issue is through panhandling, they can earn up to $100 or more a day. The message that we need to try to get out to our tourist industry is don't give directly to the homeless. The message should be donate to your favorite charity. Because if the panhandling wasn't a success there, then the homeless wouldn't congregate. It's a little different than some of the other locations that we have, the congregations starting to grow at. But 17th Street, the root cause is panhandling.
So what about, what about the county library?
The library, there's about 12 to 13 tents right now. We have been able, through county partnership, to move a number of individuals to the shelter. The group that you have remaining now, they don't want to go to the shelter. They don't want to deal with the rules, the regulations. If we had housing, they would direct, definitely go into housing, but they don't want to put up with any rules. They don't want to go through the process of going through the shelter and working with case management services. It's a unique group, you know, to be blunt, they can be very demanding at times, rude at times, but their message is quite clear. We don't want to work through the system, we don't want to go to the shelter. But if you'll give us housing, we'll take housing.
Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts on the commission they'd like to add to this discussion?
I don't have any thoughts, but I want to go back to a comment you made. You said you reached out to the Broward County Sheriff.
I said I would like to.
I thought you did, okay.
Not yet, I have not yet.
Make sure when you do that, and one of the topics that you hit, which was when they're released, they're released in the downtown area, they're not always picked up in the downtown area. They come from the other 31 cities, if not other counties and states. So maybe they can look into, maybe they can look into somewhere where we get vouchers and send them back to where they once belonged or, or was home or close to home.
Commissioner, that's exactly the point, you know? And, and the continuum of care board had a subcommittee on discharge proceedings, but they never seemed to get anywhere. And, because I sat in a few of those meetings when I was on that, on that board. And we never seemed to have made any progress with the sheriff's department at the time. So I, I'll report back to the commission after I've had these conversations with the people I mentioned. Let's see what kind of response we get. All right, um, all right, moving forward, yes, sir?
If I could just chime in for a moment? So Hal captured the situation's correct. 17th Street, I've gone to 17th Street, sat in a chair at 17th Street on the sidewalk and spent time talking to the folks there. Many of the folks I talked to, surprisingly, were veterans, which is there's really some great resources that we can help veterans get in homes. So I offered those, talked with them about those, and they declined all of them. These are folks that, for whatever reason, are not interested in taking up services. So Hal's characterization of the panhandling being one of the key magnets there is, I think, very accurate. Now, how do we address panhandling? Well, I think it's, it's two ways. It's one, from those who are giving money, and then two, from those who are receiving money. From the giving money side, and this is something, Chris, you and I have talked about, we've, we've looked at, and Mayor, I've talked with, with Alan as well, is signage. There's many cities that put signage that basically says, don't, please don't give money, you know, out to people. Please donate to this, or this area, your best favorite charity, or text this number and so forth. That's something we've looked at. Chris and Alan, where are we on that, that idea of those signs and exploring those signs?
So I'll take that one, I guess. We did put up some signs at the intersection itself. The signs, and I guess maybe this is pre-COVID world too, when people were traveling through the airport, the cruise port with some regularity. We had talked about working with Broward County to advertise about those locations because that was the primary, one of the main drivers of people that would end up through that intersection. With, with not a real tendency to fly or be on a cruise ship these days, that discussion, I guess, stalled out to some degree. And I know that we had offered, subject to the county coming forward with a design, we had even offered to, to work on a billboard or something else done on Federal Highway just south of 17th Street, how to get that message out. So probably stalled to some degree, but now that we're trying our best to come back to some sense of normal, probably as a discussion, we should rekindle.
Have we, Chris, did we put signs? I mean, we had talked about putting signs in median on 17th Street, or it was challenging because we were looking at the size and so forth, is that?
Correct, site distance was difficult for turning cars, but we did, we did put a sign up on all four approaches at, at 17th Street and Federal Highway now. Being 100% honest with you, I've been, haven't been through there and paid attention in a while to see if they still are there. Those are the kind of signs that go up and then mysteriously end up coming down in the middle of the night. So probably is worth our, our while to make sure that they haven't disappeared.
Yeah, I think, because, because I was just there today and, and I didn't see the signs, but I might be missing where exactly they are. So yeah, if you, if you can loop back with me on that, that'd be great. And, and then, Mayor, the other component. Sorry?
I was just going to say, it's one of those things that I drive through there so often, but unless I'm focused on looking for signs, it all just blends together.
Right, so that's, that's one component. The other component, Mayor, is the folks who are, you know, doing the panhandling. And in that, at that intersection, it's illegal to panhandle. So that's an enforcement.
So, so exactly, what do we want to do? I mean, we're dancing around the issue. Do we want to enforce? Are we going to cite people for giving money to homeless people?
Can I say this? I think, I think Ben hit it right on the head, Mayor, you followed up with it. If there is a law that says you don't panhandle, I don't know why we got to put a sign up to tell people not to give. If you're not panhandling, there won't be anyone to give money to. At the corner of 7th Avenue, since I've been a commissioner, and here on Andrews and Brower, it's been an issue, panhandle. Every time I pass and I see someone, I call our police department and they, they move them, those folks. So this is a group that Hal has clearly classified as panhandlers, not so much as homeless. So why are we wasting our homeless efforts, times, and talents on panhandlers who plainly sit out there, drink, do drugs, and every other thing they would like to do on our street corners?
I have an idea.
Tell us, Heather.
Okay, so it's kind of like when I got a ticket, when they had the red light statute a few years ago. If you kind of ran a red light, I didn't really run it, it was yellow, but you got a ticket. They had the license reader, so.
I believe you, I believe you.
Can't we use something like a license reader? Give people a ticket who are giving money to the panhandlers? And then we can put those funds into some sort of, you know, trust to help the homeless to house them and do things like that. I think we use a license reader. They probably have that technology still installed at all of our lights.
We can't do that. We can't cite people that are giving the money. We can only cite those that are asking for it and receiving it.
Why, why can't we? Is that our, is that our ordinance?
That would be unconstitutional. It's a first, it's First Amendment to be protected. You have a right to give money to whoever you'd like.
Oh, oh, wow, sorry, I thought it was going to.
To, to Commissioner Sorenson's point, there's, there's a limited amount of intersections in the city where panhandling is outright unlawful. Those intersections were identified as part of our ordinance because of the grading of that ordinance. There were constitutional challenges, actually, I believe, back in temporal times when they originally did it. The reason that ours passed constitutional muster is because it's related to the danger present at those intersections because they're such busy intersections. So they, we have a, and I don't have the map in front of me, but we have identified intersections throughout the city where panhandling is outright prohibited. We can't prohibit it citywide, that's, that's been shut down.
What do you think?
We can't do it in certain areas. If there's other intersections we need to add or identify, you know, we may need to look at our ordinance again and make sure that we've captured all the areas we, we should or, you know, because it's been a while since we passed that ordinance, we just can't have an outright ban.
So could 17th Street, which is an extremely busy intersection, be considered for one of those areas? be considered for one of those areas that we can restrict?
It already is. The, the, the corner, and that's why City Manager alluded to the fact that we go to signage and we have enforcement there. The US-1 and Seventeenth Street, that is identified as one of those intersections. So panhandling there is prohibited and we can't enforce it.
Okay, so what, so enforcement means what?
It, depending, I'd have to go back at the same. It's obviously a civil citation at this point because I don't think the jails are taking misdemeanors. You could physically arrest someone technically if you witnessed them doing it. But right now, enforcement with COVID would most likely be a notice to.
And we would process them through community court?
Not necessarily, no, because community court, I believe, is still geographically limited to the downtown area. So we would have to go through regular court, whether it be through our prosecutor's office, our office, or through the state attorney's office.
My guess is the state attorney's office would not take it.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, I don't know that Mike Sats is, is inclined to do that. And we're going to have a change in leadership there. So I don't know how they're going to be taking, what kind of approach they're going to be taking with those types of violations. We haven't had much luck. We do have to do it on my office.
So maybe what we do in the short term is just step up our visibility and our interaction. And, because we can write a bunch of civil citations all day long and.
A civil doesn't do anything.
There's one thing between doing, doing an action and doing an action that does some good. And I don't know that, that isn't actually that does a whole lot of good. But we can certainly, we can certainly increase our visibility in moving people along.
Okay.
And to get moved along enough, move along and stay along.
Any other questions?
This is one of the same challenges with the current individuals that are at the, at the library, which is unlike the email I read to you. Many of these folks are, are very resistant to services and so forth. And so again, it's going to be coming down, I think, to a matter of, well, how do we, you know, enforce or kind of address this?
Exactly. Okay, anything else? I have a couple of other items. I want to commend the city staff for finally being able to address the, the ecological problem we were having at Lake Melva in Point Setia Heights. I saw the machines out there, as well as the fish have now consumed all the algae that had been floating on the lake. And, and recreational activity is now resumed on the lake. I also want to thank Public Works for, for curtailing the discharge into the lake from the folks that are doing the undergrounding of the sewage pipe. There was a, a moment there when there was a discharge, the lake that seemed suspect, that has been stopped. Thank God it wasn't really a contaminant. It was just simply looked like it was bad stuff going in the lake. So I want to thank the city staff for that. Also, for those that were able to attend the 9/11 memorial this year, we were able to, to commemorate and to unveil a new monument in our city, which is at the end of Brickell Avenue, formerly of the Los Olas Riverfront. And it's a beautiful memorial, it's a beautiful ceremony. And I think it's going to be an iconic image going forward in our, in our community to have this monument there. The designers did a great job. And, and I think it's a great testament to the community spirit to want to continue to recognize what 9/11 meant, not just about the destruction of the Twin Towers, but about the heroism and the compassion that followed thereafter. And Americans are great people. And, and we have now have a monument, another monument to show how great we are. So I guess that's it for me. And now we can move on to communications. We have one person who's asked to speak. We have one communication from Sustainability Advisory Board. If I called correctly, let me get to that. So Sustainability Advisory Board sent a communication to the commission asking us to respond to a number of issues, mostly waterway equality. Is, is Dr. Gassman on the line? Is?
I am.
Hi. Did you have a moment to review this? And how did we respond to this communication? Or are we still in the process of weighing in on the issues that they presented?
So this communication is written by the Sustainability Advisory Board in response to the commission's request that they look at water quality issues. And so their recommendation, based on their review of water quality concerns after consulting with a number of different individuals and receiving presentations, were the second set of bullets, which are that the commission continue to retain water quality as a commission top priority for the year 2021, that they approve funding for the additional water quality monitoring in fiscal 2021, which you did yesterday, increase funding for outreach programs that address the importance of water quality actions neighbors and businesses can take, look for opportunities to install green infrastructure that address water quality consistent with the city's Fast Forward Fort Lauderdale Design and Construction Manual for a sustainable and resilient community and coherent public realm. And finally, to maintain funding and levels of service for cleaning and repair of stormwater catch basins. And so these are the recommendations that the board is offering the commission based on the commission's request that they review waterway quality concerns.
Okay.
Well, good recommendations.
Okay, excellent. And these are recommendations that we can, we can easily embrace. I have Marcella Todd, who's asked to speak. Is Marcella on the line? Marcella. 2970 Southwest 132nd Avenue, Davie, Florida.
I don't see the name in attendees. Can you see the name in, I do not see that name.
Okay, so we'll move on. Anyone have any questions of Dr. Gassman or regarding this communication? Okay, they're being done. We'll move on to CF1 Quarterly Investment Report for Period Ending June 30th, 2020. Who will be making that presentation?
We'll start with Susan Grant, and then she can hand it off to our financial advisors.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris, and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. For the quarter ended June 30th and fiscal year to date, the city's portfolios exceeded established benchmarks with overall portfolio generating a yield for the quarter of 1.08%. And that's compared to the benchmark of 0.2%. Our OPEB funds continue to be invested in a 60-40 split in index funds and generated a yield of 12-36 for the quarter, slightly below the benchmark, but a strong performance versus our assumed rate of return for that portfolio of 7%. The cemetery general pension and police pensions rallied for the quarter. And you know, those are also typically invested in stocks and bonds. And after a bad quarter for the period ended March 31st, those all rebounded. So those are just, that's the overview of the performance of the investment portfolios. And we have our investment advisor, Richard Pingali, and he's available to give you a market update and along with me, answer any questions you might have. Richard, are you there? Yep, you're there.
I'm, I'm here. Good, good afternoon, everyone. I will keep it fairly, fairly brief. I think for the bulk of the portfolio, as Susan mentioned, you know, the, the, the second quarter for the year was very strong, absolute returns. The city's portfolio essentially recovered the underperformance relative to the, relative to the benchmark, treasury benchmark in the first quarter. If you recall, when we talked about this last time, as investors were dealing with the uncertainty surrounding the declaration of the pandemic, they basically sold everything else and started buying treasuries. The city's benchmark is, is treasuries for the, for the majority of its portfolio. Therefore, you had underperformance in that quarter. And then this quarter, as everything normalized again, started normalizing, you saw sort of the reverse happen. So again, strong, strong performance this quarter. You know, in terms of the city's assets, which are all invested relatively short term outside of the OPEB, everything's going to be tied to the Fed. And the Fed has indicated in no uncertain terms that they're planning to keep interest rates down near zero for a long time. Chairman Powell, I think it was in July, in one of his addresses, said that the Fed was not thinking about, thinking about, thinking about raising interest rates to really underscore the fact that they are not going to move rates beyond zero. They've subsequently come out and said that not only are they keeping rates at zero, but they would also continue to provide stimulus and allow inflation to go above their 2% target. So meaning that they're willing to create enough stimulus to let the economy run, run, run hot. That also kind of supports and implies this low, low rates for, for longer kind of environment. So, you know, the, you know, a, a, assets, long-term assets for the portfolio are in excess of 2% yield. Over time, that's going to drift down as more of the current market is reflected in the portfolios we're, we're rebalancing. So, you know, good, good news looking back. But going forward, it's going to be a more challenging environment for, for, for the operating funds.
So, so this is a double-edged sword because certainly our borrowing capacity, having been increased, is now benefiting from these low interest rates. So we borrow for these like park bond or the police station, we're borrowing at lower, much lower rates. And you're saying the investment account suffers as a result because they're only paying lower rates. So I guess the question that might be asked is, are there other, are there other types of investments that are considered relatively safe that might yield a higher, a higher yield?
So the, the, the city has, when we look at similar types of organizations throughout Florida, pretty much all of the high-quality assets reflected in your investment policy. And last year, we spent some time sort of making sure we had the, the right set in there. We compared against large cities, you know, all throughout Florida and even across the country. So you, you've got kind of the broadest set available to you and, and as much flexibility as we, we would see there. You know, and we've talked about this internally. There have been some Florida entities that have looked at creating sort of an inflation hedge portion of their portfolio, meaning a, you know, sort of a small sliver of the portfolio that would invest in an even broader set of investments, you know, including things like stocks to improve the overall yield. But as it stands now, you know, you, you have probably the broadest set that we see most large cities, including in, in their policy.
Okay, any, any questions?
I do, Mayor. Just a quick question for Richard. Richard, hi, how are you today?
I'm good. How are you?
Excellent, thank you. This report that we have in front of us goes to the end of June. And we certainly know that July and August were terrific months for the market. So have we done really well in July and August?
Yes, so, so definitely you haven't seen as strong a performance in the operating fund portfolio, just because yields sort of had a big, you know, the big contraction with corporate spreads coming in, in the second quarter. And it hasn't changed as much in the third quarter, the current one that you're referring to. So that, that is not as big of a, a jump compared. But in the OPEB, you have seen a bigger increase.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Moving on to business one, discussion of water plant rebuilding options. Mr. City Manager.
I'll start with this one too, and then we'll hand it off. We've heard over a couple of recurring meetings that we wanted to have this discussion about water plants, obviously, and, and how to move forward, what models are available out there to move forward with funding them. All the way from maintaining it as a public utility where we generate revenue in the form of, of user fees to build and capitalize a new system, all the way balanced up when a privatization of a utility looks like. Don't have any preconceived notions as to which one is right for us yet, but we wanted to start the discussion so that as we either go forward in the market to, to pursue a plant being, being constructed, or we respond to a proposal that may find its way to us, that the commission has put some thought into what's palatable, what's not palatable, and what the different risks, rewards, pros and cons are. We were able to turn to our financial advisors who have a portfolio in PFM's business that deals with just this topic. And so I'll invite Sergio maybe to start off the conversation with the commission, the face that you are used to seeing. And he can lay the framework and introduce his team that will take us through a presentation and a discussion on different options. And this is just, no decisions today, just to get the juices flowing. Sergio?
Okay, great. Yes, thank you, Mr. Manager. Again, Sergio Mastodale, PFM Financial Advisors. And I'm joined here by my colleague Scott Shear in our Harrisburg office, who also has a lot of experience with utility and P3s in general. So again, as the manager kind of laid out, we want, we wanted to really provide an overview today of different public-private partnership types, kind of the spectrum of P3s. And then a little bit more specifically into municipal water ownership and operating models that exist. So if you have the, the presentation that we prepared in front of you, we'll walk through the next several slides and hopefully leave some time at the end for questions.
Before, before you go, that was an attachment that you attached later.
We did.
It's not on the, it's not on the, would I have to refresh to, for it to attach?
It's probably not going to attach. It's, you're just, we're going to have to watch it up here.
Okay, all right. Okay, sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead, Sergio.
Thank you. So moving on to, I think, slide two, past the cover page.
How are the, how are the other commissioners supposed to see it?
They'll see it on their screen like this.
Okay, can you all see the?
Yes, it's on the screen.
Okay, great.
Great, yeah, if anyone can't see it, please just feel free to interrupt me or if there's something, you have a specific question on, you know, interrupt any time. But again, try to go through this kind of fairly quickly at a high level. I won't read each bullet from every slide, but I do want to point out a few important items on each one. So kind of overall themes, if you will, when, when thinking about P3s. So on the slide in front of you, slide two, you can see here kind of the, the general term to describe a P3 or, or any kind of agreement by definition is, is a public private partnership, a P3. And, and that doesn't necessarily mean, in all cases, an outright sale of a city asset or any public asset for that matter. Moreover, P3s are really kind of, should be considered or looked at as a, as a spectrum of possibilities, if you will. And there's different points along that spectrum that we'll speak to in a little bit more detail on the next couple of slides. Moving on to slide three, please. So on slide three, again, as I mentioned, kind of P3s, by definition, they're a contract between the public and the private sector. And they can be for anything from a utility system to a toll road to a, you know, a municipal administrative building. There's different ways to carve up the structures. Really, there's a range of possibilities. And ultimately, that range is based on kind of the risk-reward transfer. You'll hear me say that a lot, the risk-reward transfer that exists within P3s. Of course, with every risk that a public issuer might lay off onto a, a private entity, it's going to either cost more for the private entity to operate, to run, or cost more for the public issuer to maintain that facility. So again, as you think about that risk-reward trade-off, that's very important in P3s. And, you know, one, one thing to really keep in mind is how much of those risks you want to, you want to offload, if you will, off the public sector. So again, the key to understand really is each component of a project, a specific project, and then utilize the techniques of, of project finance that have been around for decades and decades to reach a desired outcome, the ultimate objective that the city wants to meet. Moving on to slide four, please. So on slide four, we'll outline and summarize a few of the motivations or the reasons you might consider a P3. So if you look at the, the kind of the big boxes, if you will, the design, delivery, operations, finance and governance of a particular public asset, there's all sorts of nuances within each of those categories. and governance of a particular public asset, there's all sorts of nuances within each of those categories. So design delivery, if you're building something brand new or brand new facility, there may be construction risk. If they say, you know, P3s are, we've seen them done in Europe and even in parts of the United States for toll roads, large bridges, tunnels, some of you are probably familiar with the Miami Port, Port Tunnel. That's something that was considered a little bit innovative, a little bit of risk construction. There were a lot, several unknowns that in that case, the public sector wanted to, you know, again, transfer that risk over to the private sector. So that's on the design delivery side. In the operation, on the operating side of things, you know, the private sector might have an expertise in managing a certain type of asset. They might be able to manage that asset to a better level of efficiency. And, and they also, the private sector, when you think about that, sometimes they will always think about the total lifecycle cost of a particular asset. So many assets will require reinvestment in 10 to 20 years, 30 years down the line to keep an asset going for, you know, 50 to 70 years, which we really see in the public sector. Uh, also there's other facilities that the public sector may not be interested in operating anymore. So you can focus really back on your core mission, if you will. Facilities like this, an example of this might include something like a parking garage. You know, some public sectors we have seen sell or privatize parking garages, let a private operator really focus on that so they can come back to their core missions. On the finance side, certainly many issuers face kind of legal constraints or, or debt capacity constraints. I don't think that's the issue so much for the city of Fort Lauderdale. But certainly we do have some, some issuers that face those, those kinds of constraints. They're already at that capacity. They can't borrow anymore. There's also a consideration for monetizing a future cash flow. So if you have an asset that is providing revenue year over year and has a pretty stable history of revenue, you may want to monetize that in order to pay for something upfront. We have seen that in certain cases, uh, you know, we've seen people monetize assets in order to pay for a pension liability upfront, things like that. So that's just another example.
Been there, done that.
And I, and of course there's the governance side of things, um, you know, just ability to manage the procurement and the existing labor requirements, things like that, rate setting mechanisms. Sometimes some public issuers have more interest in, in maintaining that control. Some public issuers prefer to offload that control. Moving to slide five. Thank you. And really here, just kind of driving home that point of there's a spectrum of P3 possibilities. There's a range of possibilities, um, starting at the top where kind of the majority of our public issuers operate is the full public model, a traditional revenue stream, you control everything. You're responsible for design, construction, O and M, as well as future investment into the asset. Um, and then all the way at the bottom, you'll see the private ownership or an outright sale of an asset. Where those activities, all activities basically are now controlled by a private entity. And in certain cases, utilities being one of them, they may be regulated by a larger governmental body, like a public service commission of the state of Florida. Um, and then of course, in between, there's a variety of agreements and arrangements. And again, um, these all have varying degrees of risk transfer, risk reward transfer as far as kind of where you might land on the spectrum. With that, on the next slide, if we turn to slide six, I'll turn it over to my colleague Scott here to speak specifically about concession leases.
All right. Well, thank you, Sergio. Good afternoon, everyone. Also with me, um, online is Ben Kappenstein, my colleague here in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania as well. So we may tag team a few of these slides. So we appreciate, like Sergio said at the beginning, we appreciate the opportunity, uh, you know, very much to be able to talk to you at a high level this afternoon about some of the, kind of the bigger picture issues related to, you know, potential monetization of a system or exploring a, a public-private partnership. On page six gets a little bit more into, uh, a, a little bit more detail, although not, not a lot from the slide that Sergio just went over regarding the concession lease or some call it an asset lease. This is probably more the kind of the, the true definition of a public-private partnership. Here in, in the mid-Atlantic region, Ben and I are working with a lot of our local government clients and kind of really exploring whether it's, the system should be held by the municipality and continued to be operated and maintained and the capital done through, through that city or that township or borough or county versus doing a concession lease, um, like we have a few points on here or an outright sale. So we kind of follow a couple of different paths as we're, we're guiding our clients to the basic facts related to each one, so they can ultimately make, make a decision which one makes the most sense for their particular situation. At least in, in, in the mid-Atlantic region right now, I would say the concession lease, point number one, is a little less common than an outright sale. Some of that has to do with the size of the system and sort of what's being contemplated. A lot of the larger systems such as yours, um, there I would think, think the concession lease is probably a little bit more, a little bit more common, um, sort of the bigger they get. But, you know, again, we have a wide experience in both and the market is, has appetite for, for both. Uh, and point number two, typically these concessions or these asset leases range from about 40 to 50 years. Sometimes you see it a little bit shorter. When we first started to do these a few years ago, they were actually much longer and the market became a little bit more okay and comfortable with this 40 to 50 year term. But again, that can be customized. It, it can be 35 years. It can be 45 years. There's a lot of, uh, a lot of things are very customizable to your particular situation. In this case, in two A, the, the municipality would retain, uh, the city would retain ownership of the system, which is a lot of times a very key, uh, key aspect of this transaction and receives in many cases, not only an upfront payment, um, but also an annual consideration as well. Again, it depends on how you want to structure it. Um, there's, there's variances to all that. After the term, you know, whether it's 30 or 40 or 50 years, uh, the system is basically returned back to, to the municipality or, or the city. There's all sorts of provisions in the document that make sure and mandate that the system is returned back to the city in as good, if not better, working order than when it was originally put in place 30, 40 or 50 years ago. And again, lots of provisions on there to make sure that the concessionaire does not over-leverage the system with a lot of debt while, uh, they're running it. Cause again, we want to make sure it comes back to the city in good condition with little to no debt associated with it. Again, all, all that's laid out within the agreement itself. In, in point number three, uh, this can sometimes be a, a, an interesting issue. There's no real regulatory oversight. Basically, all the governance lies within the municipality or the city to make sure that the contract is being honored. You know, obviously right now, under your, the municipality's ownership, the city's ownership, you know, everything sort of lies with, with the city on how the system is run. With an outright sale, kind of the other end of the spectrum, you have the, the public service commission that, that provides the oversight to it in many instances. Or some kind of regulated agency with a concession lease or an asset lease. The, the oversight again, kind of comes back to the municipality to make sure that, uh, again, all the provisions are being honored and that there's no violations. Now, sometimes there's committees set up and, and, and other things like that to, to keep the burden off the administration. But there, there will still be a fair amount of oversight and involvement going forward. We'll, we'll touch on that here in a little bit. And that's sort of what kind of leads into point number four, um, that with a concession lease, with this kind of structure, uh, this public-private partnership, there would still be a fair amount of involvement by the municipality in the operations and, and planning. Again, making sure that the agreement is being honored, the system is being run according to, uh, according to the plan. And that's what the operating standards are for. You see there in point four A, that we need to make sure that the concessionaire adheres to the operating standards. That's an extremely important document that's put together by the team that, that basically lays out in a lot of detail how the system should be run to meet all the different state regulations, city regulations, whatever the case may be. That's yours to really dictate how you want the system to be run. And then it needs to be that, that, that operating standards agreement needs to be reviewed very closely by the city to make sure that, you know, going forward, uh, all the provisions again are being met. And if they're not, there's, there's monetary penalties associated with it, which, you know, again, outlined in, in a lot of detail in the agreement. This can be very time consuming, so it really depends on, on some of the key reasons why an entity may be looking at doing a public-private partnership. If it's to, to really kind of exit the business and dedicate resources elsewhere. This is not probably the, the, um, the financing structure or the delivery structure to contemplate just because it, it still will be very time consuming going forward. And for C, you know, again, we like to be very upfront and honest right from the get-go that in some instances, there, there are contract, uh, contractual disputes between the parties going forward. Sometimes it can be resolved very quickly. Sometimes they drag out in court for a long time. Cause both parties may not see exactly eye to eye when it comes to certain provisions after the agreement has been signed later down the road. And so again, it's, it's not uncommon to see contract disputes with these kinds of transactions. You know, one of the other interesting points, number five, is the future rate increases are actually prescribed in, in the concession agreement, uh, sort of on day one. That, that we all kind of have control over how that, um, how that rate regime is, is, is structured for the next 30, 40, 50 years. There's typically inflationary type increases built into the documents. And in many cases, there's also other allowable increases to recover capital costs for various, um, you know, capital projects. And obviously in your case, that, that would be a, a big component of it for this potential new plant to, to, to make sure that there is some leeway for rates to be raised also for a certain capital project. So again, all that's sort of built into this agreement on day one. And then periodically, depending on how the transaction is structured, maybe it's every five years, maybe it's every 10 years that, um, the capital needs of the system are looked at with, with both parties. And, uh, you know, kind of the, the next 10-year trajectory is then set to, to decide what, what capital is needed to be put in the system to keep it a, a very well-running system. So again, lots of detail that is prescribed in the agreement to, to make sure that the, the capital is able to be put, uh, put in the ground or in the treatment plant and that some of those costs can be recouped. So again, very, it's, it's, it's a couple hundred page document. We sort of laid out some of the high points here on this page that we, we, again, we thought would be good to, just to touch on here briefly this afternoon. If you go to page seven, please. So on the other, um, kind of the other side of things with the outright sale, um, you know, again, depending on the region of the country, depending on the time, depending on the size of the system, this has been a little bit more of the common structure that, that we've seen. But the public-private partnerships, I would say, are definitely gaining, uh, more momentum and, and more being considered, uh, and effectuated. And again, point number two, just pretty simply, uh, all the assets of the system in this case are sold to, to some kind of regulated or unregulated utility. Usually in exchange in two A, there's a receipt of substantial upfront consideration or upfront payment. And going forward, then all the assets and future rights to collect the revenues are transferred, uh, to the, to the new owner.
So can I interrupt you for just a second?
Absolutely.
You say this has been a more common structure. So you're saying that there's, that there are many cities in the country that have given up their water, their water utility operations over to a private company to operate and the city no longer has any involvement in it? Is that what you're telling us today?
There, there are definitely some of those. Yes. I mean, there, there's a good mix. There's, there's a, there's a large, uh, large allocation where the utility continues and will continue to be run by the, by the city, let's say, in, in this case, by the municipality. There are others where, um, again, depending on circumstances, where the, the city or the municipality just said, we want an outright sale, we're done with, uh, this business for whatever reason may be. And we want to, we, the city, the township, the county want to sell this to a regulated buyer. And, um, you know, there's some that say, we, we want to still maintain ownership, but we want to outsource a lot of the, uh, management of it, the, the capital and the financing out to another very qualified operator. So it's really case by case. Um, I'd say the majority are still, uh, owned by the municipality, but we are seeing kind of more and more, uh, and either explore or actually go through an outright sale or, uh, some kind of public-private partnership.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And point number three, uh, if, if sold to a regulated utility, you know, some kind of regulatory body governs in Florida, specifically the, the, the P S C. After closing, um, which again is very different than a public-private partnership, where you just heard that there's a kind of a lot of involvement, uh, going forward with an outright sale, very little involvement, um, by the city or by the municipality. With, with, with the sales, basically contract is signed, goes through the, kind of the process to close. And after that, the city had very little to do with the running of, of the system. So that's a very big difference between, uh, the two, the two models. And then on the next page, page eight, we just kind of put some things side by side. And a lot of this is, is, uh, what I had already mentioned, but just kind of put it in a different format where we hit on some of the key points on the left-hand side, sort of who maintains ownership, terms of the agreement, who regulates it, so on and so forth. And then the middle column is for the outright sale and the right-hand column is for the concession lease. And you can just sort of put them side by side and, um, and kind of see the differences between the two. I mean, there, there really are some, some major fundamental differences, not saying one's right or wrong. It really comes down to, um, every unique situation. And, and even within, so, so there's a, a, a pretty big difference between what we see on this page, between outright sale and a concession lease. And even within a concession lease, if we go back to the one slide, I think that might have been slide five that Sergio went through. We don't need to flip back to it now, but, uh, well, since you're there, um, if you, if you go to, if you go to the concession lease, sort of area there, even that little red dot, even within the concession lease, you can kind of move that red dot with your, sort of with your finger, if you, if you think, think about it. And again, there's a lot of variation among one P3 compared to another P3. It really comes down to the whole risk transfer and what specifically are clients looking for. You could have a concession lease that looks a lot more like a private ownership. You could have a concession lease that looks and feels a lot more like public ownership. And again, it's really just that risk reward or that risk transfer. So they really are customizable and it comes down to the city, the municipality, our client kind of understanding the pros and cons, um, related to that. So thank you for going back to, to that slide. If you don't mind going back then to slide eight. Yeah. So that basically kind of summarizes the difference, looking at both of them side by side. If you go to page nine, please. So on page nine, um, there, every, every situation again is different. You probably get tired of me hearing that, but we really do stress that, uh, every, every, every client has sort of different needs. But these are a couple that we feel are extremely important, no matter where or who the, who the client is or what the situation is. And the first one is employee input. That is always, I, I'd say probably the number one consideration that our clients have in the front of their mind and want to make sure is satisfied if a transaction is pursued or even during the exploration process itself. Even if they decide not to go forward with something, but just in exploring the opportunity, we want to make sure that the, the, the employee input is, is first and foremost in many cases. And, and there, there, there are provisions and there's ways that employees can be protected in, in either one of those structures, uh, either in an outright sale or, um, or in a concession lease. And we, again, we, we have the ability to structure the document, draft the document the way we feel the, the, the team, when I say we, it's the whole team collectively views the, the transaction. So we could, we could write it such that, um, uh, we would offer employment to all the, and, and current, all the current employees at or above the current compensation levels. So that could just be a provision, a mandate in the document says whoever the concessionaire is or the buyer, you, you have to honor this, period. You also have to honor the current collective bargaining agreement that's applicable. So again, that's all, that's all stipulated. It, it, it will have an impact to say a bid or to the actual transaction. But if that's an important, uh, part of the transaction, it, it, you know, it needs to be put in there and it needs to be communicated, um, I think effectively with everybody as well, uh, which is point one. Which is point one, one B, uh, that's extremely important to effectively communicate, uh, with all the various employee groups during the process. From the very beginning, all the way through wherever the process goes, if it, whether it stops somewhere in the middle. Uh, and never goes to completion, or if it goes all the way to completion, we feel that. That's an extremely critical part of the transaction is making sure that effective communication. Happens that, 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 uh, the employees are, are well informed. In some instances, you know, when we go back and talk to some employees or, or, um, you know, we, we hear third hand. That some of the employees, uh, ultimately they, they may find that, um, they have greater, uh, growth, professional growth. Possibilities, uh, with one of these kind of structures with an outright sale or concession could be a bigger entity, maybe more room to grow, maybe more room to. You know, be relocated if, if that's the desire to another part of the country. So it's, you know, every situation, like I said, is different, but we have found that in some instances employees, um, actually, you know, find, find it very rewarding. To, to go through one of these processes and, and, uh, you know, end up on, on the other side. In the middle of this page, uh, we have rate controls. Obviously, that's another extremely important aspect when it comes to these kind of transactions. Right behind the, the employees. And so, um. You know, the setting of the rates, uh, and what goes into the rate making are extremely important. It's, sometimes it's not always about the highest. Price, uh, related to a public-private partnership or an outright sale. It's more of a balance between, uh, making sure the document can be adhered to, making sure there's still adequate upfront, uh, consideration. Uh, or ongoing consideration, but also that, that impacts the rates in a satisfactory way. And that's something, again, everyone's very cognizant of, how's it going to impact me as a rate payer? Well, there's, you know, lots of ways. To, to build that into the agreement, but that's something that is always, you know, very focused on as well. Um, and then the last point, procedure and timing. You know, the details, uh, and the importance of negotiating. The, 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 the good provisions, the more favorable, favorable provisions for our clients. In agreement are extremely critical to make sure that, um, it's an overall success. And that, a lot of that comes down with, um, just a lot of communication and receiving stakeholder input. I think that's before a document is finalized, uh, we need to make sure that again, there's, there's proper communication, proper vetting. And that all stakeholders have been heard and the various components are, uh, baked into, uh, the agreement. So again, those are sort of the, the, the three of the big ones. There's, there's clearly more, but we just sort of wanted to lay out for you just a couple of the points that. You know, a lot of times you either then drill down into, to, to much more detail if a process is, is undertaken. Next slide, please. So I, I think I already hit on a bunch of these or Sergio did as well in the beginning. As far as keys to successful implementation, the, the first one is making sure that the goals. Uh, are understood and clearly laid out, um, between the client and the, the, the project team. We want to avoid any kind of fishing expeditions, uh, with ill-defined procurement instructions. So again, goals need to be set out first and foremost, communicated with all the stakeholders. Make sure it's understood loud and clear, uh, what they are, uh, and what the process will be. Um, and that's where it leads into point number two, maintaining a disciplined procurement schedule is, is very important. We like for our client to be in the driver's seat with these, um, these transactions are very, very time consuming. And can be very, very challenging and we need to make sure that there's kind of boundaries here and a lot of discipline. Is, is maintained during that procurement process or otherwise the wheels can really start to fall off. Which can then hinder our communication abilities and, and stakeholder outreach. So we've put a lot of emphasis. In the overall, uh, procurement schedule and keeping it sort of very disciplined. Uh, and then again, lastly, the effective communication is, is key with, with all that as well.
Next slide.
And as far as, uh, a, a potential. Timing for a P three process, the, these are all, um, kind of very different. But, um, the phase one, which is, uh, what we commonly see out there is analysis and stakeholder outreach. And in many instances, that starts over in the right-hand side with. With a request for qualifications or an RFQ that is released, uh, to determine, uh, interest. To just to make sure, uh, that there are interested parties out there and that the interested parties have the capability. To, uh, kind of really be part of the vetting process and due diligence process. We want to make sure that if our client. Does want to proceed, that ultimately there's going to be a partnership with, um, with, with a, a team or a firm that have the financial wherewithal. Has the engineering wherewithal and, and the ability to actually, uh, do what they say they're, they, that they can do. So that's a very important aspect of things. Also during that time, explore, um, the impacts of different scenarios, uh, with, uh. Kind of how it impacts the city itself or the client itself. Whether it's keeping the system, you know, just minus, uh, the control of the city going forward versus entertaining one of these ideas. We like to, uh, have that comparison, just, just have that dialogue going and start looking at the pros and cons. So e- everyone can make an informed decision if they want to move into the, to the next step. Which is the transaction development or phase two, uh, in many instances where, um, you know, you really kind of. Dig down into the details, uh, of these asset purchase agreement, if it's an outright sale. Or the, the concession agreement or asset lease agreement, if it's, if it's a public-private partnership. And again, really start building that document, whichever, whichever document, whichever path you want to go down. And, uh, make sure it meets the needs of the client or of, of the city. And then if everyone's comfortable, uh, actually putting it out to, to bid. So that, you know, again, kind of keeping that disciplined process that, um, those, those firms that have been pre-qualified, if you will. Through the RFQ process are the ones that receive the RFB or the request for bids. And those are the ones that are kind of stick through the whole process. You always have the right, the client always has the right to eliminate one of the teams if for any reason. You know, that become uncomfortable with having them in there or we find out that they don't have the overall capabilities to perform. So once that RFB is sent out, um, receive the proposals. And again, a lot more stakeholder outreach and education. And then ultimately phase three is, is execution of a transaction, uh, execution of a transaction if, you know, it makes sense. For, for our client. And you can kind of see on the left-hand side how long that may take. Again, that's just an average. Some go quickly, some go longer. This just gives you an overall general illustration. Of sort of the main three that we see as the, the, the main three phases, the time associated with each one and some of the, the key. The key actions for each one of these phases. Next slide, please. And that's, that's, uh, kind of the, the main items that we wanted to. Share with you today. We're happy to answer any questions between myself and Sergio and Ben. I know it's sort of a lot to digest in a short amount of time, uh, but you know, again, we're happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Uh, anyone have any questions of these gentlemen?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Scott and Sergio. I appreciate y'all joining us today. I'm looking at the concession lease versus the outright sale. And you talk about, you know, the outright is more common, the concession is a little bit less common. I'm curious in your studies, if the cities that you studied had. Sound financial health or if they were struggling and they needed somebody to come in and bail them out.
That's a great question. Um, I can, Ben and I can specifically speak to more of the mid-Atlantic region. And especially just focus here in Pennsylvania, since that's where we're seeing a lot of activity at, at the moment. We started, um. About eight or nine years or so ago, uh, with, with advising our clients through this process. And, uh, many of the, sort of the ones that we were working on early on were more of the challenged credits. For whatever reason, they just weren't, weren't a very financially healthy city or township or, or county, and they kind of needed funds. To, to balance our budget or to, uh, implement other projects, whether the case may be. But lately, over the past few years, we have definitely seen that change to now we have some very financially healthy. Clients that are looking to do this. Yeah. Again, just whether, whether it's a sale, an outright sale or a public-private partnership. They're basically, hey, we, it's a good time. There's a good market right now. And the kind of the math and the financial aspect of the transaction work. And, you know, again, whichever, however the transaction is structured, we just have some of our clients say, we know we're financially healthy. And we want to be, we want to make sure we can, we can continue to do that for the next twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, whatever the case may be, for the next generations. Um, and so that's why we're entertaining this to, for our water system or our sewer system, whatever the case may be. So, um, that's kind of a long way of saying it started with more of the distressed credits. And now again, it's more of the, the financially healthy credits that we're, we're seeing this, um, that we're advising our clients.
So there, you see them selling the financially healthy cities to get that big capital bump and put it into investing in a, something else in their city. And then just getting rid of.
Yes.
Anything.
In some cases, yep, that's correct.
So, so even the financially healthy city, they just need that capital or they, they want to sell it to invest it in a different way. So for them, it's. Still somewhat financial. Do any of these cities, do you know, have a triple A bond rating? And they have that capability to really go out and.
Well, we, we actually, uh, we were dealing with a very large township, uh. Just outside the Philadelphia area and it was, it was a good sized system, not quite as big as, as yours. And they actually went through the whole process. Got a real good bid and that was for an outright sale. Uh, and then that, they were a triple A credit, are a triple A credit. And, and then they rejected the bids, um, kind of in, in the final hour for, for various reasons. But we have other very strong double A credits. Um, and we actually did, we did have another triple A credit. That they closed their transaction maybe two, two years or so ago. So yeah, it's. Like I said, we, we have the, the, the double ways and the trip ways, which are, you know, very, very good credits. And we've, we've also had the non-investment grade. That have gone through the process as well. So.
Right. I mean, when you mentioned the Florida Public Service Commission, I, it's kind of my understanding that that, um, commission kind of. Regulates and oversees maybe some of the cities in Florida that weren't doing so well and they needed to get a little help and they needed to get that. Commission to come in and regulate them. Um, so they needed a little bit more of a bailout. I'm just trying to understand if, if a. If it makes sense for a financially healthy city like we are. To, to move forward in this direction and, and, um, and I know Jacksonville tried to sell all their utilities a couple of years ago. Do you know how that ended? Did that, did they pull back?
That process was, was basically terminated, um, after they had, I, I think they had bids in hands.
I think they did.
And then they, and then the city.
Commissioner, this is, this is John Harp, City Auditor. So that process was terminated, uh, as a result of massive fraud committed by the CEO. And, uh, and, and senior staff to reward themselves handsomely. In the event of that potential sale, they allowed themselves to buy shares, if you will, in JEA at $10 a share, which were then going to pay out. In excess of a billion dollars upon completion of the sale. Once the council auditor up there made that public, that pretty much torpedoed the deal.
Okay. So that, we're, we're not comparing ourselves to that. Do you have, and maybe this is a, a, a different question for somebody else. I'm curious or concerned about. Our water rates. That's a big issue I have in my district. I just would like to get some data. On, um, if the city did choose to move forward with a P three. The ones that have gone forward already, what, what do their water rates look like? I mean, the only reason I would do this, if it could be, you know, faster, better, cheaper, that's kind of what we hear. And I would want the water rate to be cheaper. I want the residents to have, see that savings, you know, in their monthly bills. That, that's what's important to me in addition to, you know, our employees. That's another concern. But do you have any data on that or how I could?
Probably a common concern. I'm sure Scott has some, some specific data points he can share with you. I would say, um, you know, like anything, a trade-off as far as the, the risk reward, right? So if you were going to, it's possible to enter into a sort of P three agreement and control the rates moving forward. Uh, just knowing that you're going to have to trade that off with something else.
Right. And the trade-off, it seems like they possibly give some, so we have a, um. Another concern of mine is ROI. So we stopped the rate of, you know, rate of return, rate of that's that we are getting back. I don't, you know, giving an ROI back to, you know, privately held company. You know, that, that kind of concerns me, um, be money back to the city again and not my. My goal would be to lower our water rates. My, I'm, like I said, I'm a little concerned about the ROI because we, we fought for the past three years about. ROI in our own city, even just transferring between funds. And so now what does that mean? Because obviously a private company would, would need a return and, and I understand that. But, okay, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around this and, um, I'm still doing it. But thank you.
Yeah, no, you're, you're asking all the right questions and, and it really does come down to those analyses and. And that's where a lot of times our clients say, well, for us to really do an accurate. Or for us to be comfortable with the outcome of those analysis, we, we need to go through some kind of process, whether it's a full-blown process or. Something else to be able to garner a lot of information, um, you know, about what a potential P three could look like. So that ultimately it can be put side by side by, well, what if, what if the city just keeps the system and does the project itself and controls the rates? Like it does today, what, what are those differences? Uh, it's hard to do that today. Because we don't know what the P three, we don't know how that would shape up. And so that's where a lot of times we go through a process and. Sometimes then we get the, we get the results back from a bid process and our client says. Hey, you know, thanks for the process. I learned a tremendous amount. This was, this was very valuable data. But now we, we know, we feel better actually keeping the system. You know, we're doing a great job and we know we can continue to do a great job in the future. So great process. It confirmed that we want to keep the system or it could go the other way. Hey, process worked out very well, good information. We did the. The side-by-side analyses and we feel that it's better to do, you know, a P three or an outright sale. You know, so, so that's where it all comes down to the information. That, uh, is provided to you so you can make that, make that kind of decision. Cause there's, there's lots of moving pieces, right? There's lots of variables. And we want to try to provide as many scenarios, provide as much detail as we possibly can. For, uh, for everyone to make a very well-educated, uh, decision on this.
And so Scott, this isn't really for you, but for my other commissioners too. One of my concerns is that we just voted in FRS for all of our city employees. And if we went with a, the floor retirement system, you guys probably know that. So I, I know what I'm talking to. And if we switch to our employees or, you know, the, the employees of a private organization, they would not be eligible for that. I mean, maybe there's a way to structure it so they can still be our employees or something. I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe that's a, has, do you know, Scott or Sergio, if that's an option, could they still be our employees? If we had a P three?
I, I, I always like to go into every question saying it's, it's, it's a possibility. We just need to explore that a little bit more. That might be a, 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 a. Big challenge. Uh, we may not be able to overcome that challenge, but I'd say we, we would need to explore it. I, I think that. Probably not, but you know, again, we just, we just need to, to kick those tires a little bit more.
Okay. So those are just some of, some of my concerns. All, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Seventy questions? Okay. So, um, going forward, what, what are next steps? Chris?
Yes. Well, there was a lot of, uh, a lot of information in a short period of time, very complicated. To pick what's right for us. So I think what I, what I did here. Um, and I'll want to work with our finance group and even our financial advisors is that sometimes. The beginning of a process leads you to an outcome that you didn't anticipate on the backend. That we need to start to do something so that we lay the framework for. Deciding how we move forward with the water plant. And so, um, I like that idea of, uh, of. Exploring it to get to the, uh, to, to get to an answer that makes sense for us.
All right. Well, um, all right. So let me just say, make a couple of points then. I think it's, I think it behooves us as a commission for us to reach out to our community in the interim. To see if there's an appetite, uh, within this city, uh, for, for, um, us to. Sell our water utility and, and give it over to a, to a, a private entity. With, by retaining a sort of public service commission as an oversight board, much like we see in our electric company, these with FP and L and so forth. Or are we more? Uh, or are we more interested in allowing, uh, a, a private entity to take over the operations? We still own it. Um, they operate it and they give us a turnkey. Uh, operation at the end of twenty five or thirty years to take over the operation or or give us the option taking over after thirty years. I don't know what the, what a plant would look like after thirty years, but, um, but the point is that, um. You know, we have to weigh the difference between, um, whether or not we can get the place built. Quickly and efficiently and operate it efficiently. Or is it, is the private sector more capable of of building it and operating it more quickly? And more efficiently. And, um, those are, those are the, the, um, basic questions we have to ask ourselves. We have to ask the community. I can tell you right now that based on information I've received, um, that the private sector can build it more quickly. And, um, and based on some experience that we've seen in some of the places we've, we've, um, been challenged in the past. That private sector often operates more efficiently. So, but having said that, um, you know, the goal here is to ensure. That the workers receive a work, a working wage, uh, number one, number two. That, um, that the the cost of water is reduced from what we're seeing it today because we're not operating it as efficiently as possible. And again, information that I've received from some of the, um, prospective proponents have indicated that they could reduce the cost of. Water, which is always a plus. And, um, um, and I think that, uh, you know, there's sometimes. It's best to leave it in in, uh, private hands that to be able to make sure that we provide our community with the best possible service. That we may not long be able to do. Let me give you an example. I remember the early two thousands when I was a commissioner. We had the the choice of either retaining a waste collection or giving it over to a private entity. And I think our experience has shown us that that turning it over to the private entity has been much more efficient and. Um, and allowed us to reserve a lot of capital that we wouldn't have to otherwise expend. And I think, uh, the cost has been, believe it or not, has been kept lower than it could have been if we had kept it as an internal operation. So, uh, with that as an example and watching, looking at other cities, um, which we will be shown. To see whether those operations are functioning well or not. These are the types of considerations I'm thinking of going forward. I don't know whether the community really wants to give up complete control of the utility, but certainly a shared responsibility, a shared connection. Might be the way. And I think that, uh, hopefully we can, uh, you know, find out through the process, you know, which is which, uh, which way is going to. Ultimately be the best for the city of Fort Lauderdale. So, yes, sir.
Thanks. Um, Chris, a couple of questions for you, Chris. One, can you, are you gonna, can you email us this deck? That we just reviewed? Great, great.
I, I believe that the city clerk sent that.
He sent it yesterday. City clerk sent it yesterday, Ben. Send your emails.
Okay, great. Thank you. Second question is, Chris, tell us, what's the contractual relationship here between the city and Scott's team?
Uh, so P F M is our financial advisor. So we have, uh, you know, they they can do this kind of presentation and, um. And if he within the scope of the work that we have contracted with them, if we choose to go further, my guess is they're going to, uh. Um, want to negotiate something different. Um, but there's, we could use P F M or any assortment of advisors out there in this space that have done with. These types of relationships.
And keep in mind, and Ben, keep in mind, we have John Herbst, certainly well schooled in these things. And, uh, and while there may be some, uh, some entities out there that specialize in utilities. Um, you know, I I've always relied on John to give us the final word on the viability of of things like this. So. You know, at least we know we have that to fall back on.
Okay, great. Yeah. So to your point, Mayor, and and I guess the questions to Chris is. To the mayor's point of kind of educating, sharing with the, our neighbors about this possibility. Um, we could ask Scott and his team to partake with us in a, you know, a virtual civic association meeting or so forth. You know, every once in a while to help educate and answer questions. Chris, is that fair?
Yeah, I'll, I see that Sergio's unmuted. He's probably our closest day to day contact. I'm hearing. So I'll, I'll go to Sergio and ask if that's something that, uh.
Yes, absolutely, Commissioner, absolutely. Uh, myself and the team will will be available to.
So, Commissioner, um, this is similar to, um, like when Nancy, uh, Gasman went from, uh. One association to another to explain the infrastructure projects that we were doing and, um, and allow people to ask questions and to become part of the process. I think we could replicate that process so that people have a, uh, you know, people on, feel like they've at least been informed. There was this complete transparency as to what we're doing.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So could someone connect me with Sergio so I have his contact info to, um, you know, engage on some of that?
Yeah, so we we can certainly do that. That would be through, uh, Susan Grant and her, uh, group in finance.
Okay, great.
So when is this coming back to us, Chris?
Um, probably. Thirty to sixty days. I mean, if if you're asking the commission to get a sense of what the community thinks. Um, I think that that probably needs a couple of meetings, but I don't know that it needs more than that. So, um, we won't let it die on the vine.
So maybe sometime the first part of November?
Late October, first part of November.
Does that give you folks enough time to reach out to the community?
I want to make a couple of comments. No, it's not funny. I want to make a couple of comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I misunderstood what you said. Uh, yes, sir. Go ahead. Are you finished, Ben?
Yes, thank you. Yep.
Yes, uh, yes, Commissioner.
And I I want John Herbst to, uh. Chime in at any time because, um. I will be hanging my hat on your understanding of how these things work. But from what I can understand from a P three. Um, controlling our water treatment system, um, the number one benefit that I see. Is the capital improvement. After that, I'm frightened. I am, um. Not willing to put our water treatment in the hands of the private sector. Uh, these couple of firms that have kind of courted us thus far, uh, asked these questions as well. And when we got to the end of the presentations, um, I asked, what will happen? To the end user, the person that turns on the tap. The person that's now complaining about our water being yelled, the the person that is, is complaining about the five ash condition. Um, what will happen to them economically? They each said the cost will go up. And that is what is frightening me that I can't, um, be a part of that policy. Or that interaction like we can now, uh, with the aging, even with the aging facility we have. We still have people that can go in, coordinate, go in, do the maintenance that we have done this commission, uh, to it. And, um, kind of keep a, 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 a personal eye on it. And when I looked. Around at some of the other states, uh, that are, that are participating, I just see these horror stories. I can go to Atlanta, Georgia. I can go to Indianapolis, I can go to Pittsburgh, I can go to Chicago, I can go to Flint. And a lot of these folks converted back, you know, years later after, um, going into the private hands and you just keep hearing. Horror stories of the privatization. So this is just my own Googling, my own knowledge. So I would like to see. Um, um, more success stories before I turn, um, the city of Fort Lauderdale's water treatment into. The hands of the private sector. Now, here's what I asked, uh, one of the companies of the other day and why they were explaining. If I lived in. Victoria Park and I had a pipe burst. And the private companies running the water treatment system, which they were assuring me that how much better they could do this. So I said. Whose responsibility is it if the pipe burst in Victoria Park? And you run the water treatment system, which I knew the answer. He said that is still the city's responsibility. So I don't think it solves our problem of our infrastructure, um, woes, if you will. I think it just helps us initially with that upfront cost to build this center or this treatment center. But it's not going to help with all the other things, the other moving parts to it. And I think at the end of the day, just like the stormwater assessment. You know, we're gonna be trying to explain to people why the bills went up and we're gonna get the wrath from it. And I just think we gotta find a different mode of operation. Uh, to facilitate the cries of the people who said we needed to have this done. We understand that and figure out how we get it done. And we control it. And they were talking about, they talked to the teams already, not to, well, to the unions, I'm sorry. And the unions were okay with it, uh, and they're gonna hire the people that we're gonna lose from our, from our staff. I I just can't. Imagine all those things adding up to be that great. Can you chime in, please, John, and help me? Understand this, cause I, as it, as it sits now, I'm totally against this privatization.
So Commissioner, you raise a number of very important issues. Um, so let me start off by saying, when you go into a P three. It is a menu of options that you can choose from. So it's build, own, operate, finance, maintain. Well, let me take own out of that. Build, finance, operate, maintain. And you, as the commission, will decide which out of that menu you want to put out there. So you may, for example, say that I want you to build it, finance it, um, but, uh, will be responsible for operations. You know, you, you choose that in that R F P that eventually.
Yes.
Right. The, the other, the other issue is you can control in that R F P that the commission will approve the rates. You can put anything into that R F P in eventual contract that you want. To P F M's point though, the more risk you push off. To that potential bidder, the higher the price is going to be. Um, so. And and they, they touched on a few things that I think are are key, you know, so the, the entirety of the P three process. Is based on really risk transfer. So you're transferring the risk of financing, which for the city of Fort Lauderdale is not an issue. As, you know, Commissioner Moritas pointed out, our, our financial strength is is very secure. You, you transfer the risk. Uh, and and I'm gonna give you three examples, actually, if I could, of P threes that we've looked at here locally in the last couple of years. So when we first started the federal courthouse process, we were doing that as a P three because the federal government didn't have any money. In its capital budget for courthouses. So we were looking to the private sector.
I think that's a great example, but that's a courthouse who are gonna be leasing space. We're talking about water.
Right.
In perpetuity to our residents and controlling the rates, you know, when we're, when this commission is long and gone.
Precisely, precisely.
It's an apple and orange.
No, I'm just saying that that was the reason that we were looking at it for the courthouse was because we needed the private sector financing. In our case, we don't need that. The, the second example, which they touched on, is speed of delivery. And I think you can look at the Beckham Group. And stadium as speed of delivery, perfect example of get it done quicker than we ever could have. The.
That is a sports team that is heavily financed. They know what they want it. They got a great land deal from us and they're gonna milk it to the hill. It's great for us. That was a win, win, win. I'm talking about water.
Now, hold on, third example. Third example was the Los Olas Marina, where we did risk transfer because we knew that. Sun Tex is one of the largest marina operators in the private sector. So they are better at running marinas in a global sense than we are. At attracting that global hundred foot plus yacht customer that we were not as adept as.
I agree with you one hundred percent. There, again, that's an apple and an orange. I'm talking about water.
Absolutely.
And I've seen, I'm looking at a map now of the United States and shows percentages of these states that have, um. Privatized, they're very low percentages. And what I do see that sticks out amongst, uh, a, a lot of them is. Mismanagement that you mentioned with Jacksonville of these corporations, you know, uh, the, uh, cause once you get into these private companies, so everybody wants a dividend. And I want more than John and John wants more than, than, um, Trent Talis and Trent Talis wants more than Mariottas. And you know, and it goes on and on and on. Sometimes the greed can, um, can end up in the laps of our taxpayers, constituents. Or residents. So water in the hands of private people.
Right.
Just really, really raised a flag for me. So.
So now you're on to the, now you are to the last. I am. So now we're at that last part. So the most important part of going forward with this is the contractual protections. That you build in to both the R F P and the eventual agreement. So I'll give you a couple of examples where this has gone poorly. So we had entered into an agreement with, uh, Waste Management when we did the Waste to Energy Plan out, um, out on four forty one. And we wound up locking ourselves into a thirty year deal with Waste Management where we were paying much more for garbage than other communities were. Because of how that agreement was structured. And then at the end of the useful life, that, uh, that facility is. Has not yet been maintained to the level where it's, where we won't have to be replaced. They'll have to build a new one. Okay, it's at that level. You could also look at our contract with the Bahia Mar, which required them thirty years ago to maintain that facility in a first class condition. You could look at that and you could argue that the contract that we had with Bahia Mar thirty years ago didn't have enough provisions in it to ensure that first class condition. Was what we as a community thought was first class condition. And that's why it has to be renovated and brought back up to stand. And that's why we have had been so critical of previous management of the Bahia Mar was because our contract wasn't strong enough. To allow us to set, um, real expectations. And so if 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 our expectations in the contract are not measurable and specific, then we've got problems. And and that's really where it comes down to. So to your, to your question, we have to build performance guidelines into that contract in terms of water quality. Availability, we can control cost. We have to build in things that refer to maintenance standards. Subject to our inspections and certifications. We have to build in every protection we can possibly think of. Plus, look at other cities to your point where things have failed and ask ourselves, why did they fail? What didn't they do? And then on the front side, we've got to build those protections into the contract. That really, cause to your point, this is a, this is a critical municipal service. You know, one of the oldest services. That cities have been constituted to perform is water and sewer. You know, if you look back in London, going in the middle ages with the, the, the diseases that were prevalent, it was the improvements in water and sewer. That that wiped out a lot of those diseases. It's a key, key, critical municipal function. And maintaining some level of control over the delivery of that key service is incumbent upon us when we draft that contract.
You want privatization or you want to keep it in house?
So I'm gonna give you a personal opinion and I rarely do that. So this is really just me. I, I am not a fan of privatization in terms of selling it off. I would, I would not recommend selling off the utility, but in terms of letting another, um, entity manage it. As long as we have really strong controls in place, um, that can be something that you could consider. But again, it comes down to the strength of the controls you build in. I can't over emphasize that. And that's our contract.
Okay, Alan, what do you think about this?
Well, you, to your point, Commissioner, you do have some protections built into your charter. Um, the charter comp plates it as a franchise. There are limitations in there, uh, that would have to be reconciled with whatever. General plans are out there nationally. Obviously, we have a Florida statute to the extent that we deal with P threes, but. Um, uh, that there are built in protections in place regarding rates and the city's ability to. Manage those rates. Um, uh, it it's kind of simply stated, but if the Public Service Commission takes over the rates, that's their deal. And we don't have anything to say, but anything otherwise, we have a say in those rates. So there are some protections built into the charter that will have to be looked at. As we consider these various models.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, John.
I have one last question, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, so John, um, and we've talked about some inefficiencies we have, we possibly have within our own water department. Or maybe we say the opposite, there will be more efficiencies if a private group runs it. Um, and I know we're hiring an owner representative too. We just voted that in on the budget to help manage this process moving forward to build. Uh, the new five ash. Have we ever done an audit of our current water? Have we ever done an audit of our current water treatment plant and do, you know, do we have all the efficiencies we need? Or should we be doing that as we're kind of analyzing possibly, you know, allowing someone else to manage it? I, I mean, maybe we can make some adjustments too.
So to the answer the first question, we have not done an audit of the water operations. And frankly, we're not in a position in my shop to be able to evaluate operating, you know, efficiencies within, within the, the plant. I think in that case, I would recommend bringing in engineering firm because that's really who you need is somebody with, uh, with water plant, um, you know, engineering understanding to be able to, to talk about that. Problem with that is you're going to find that most of them are going to want to be people that participate in the process. So finding somebody that was willing to do that and is not interested in being part of a future bid for the system will be a little bit of a challenge. But, but I think that's really who you'd want to look at. Certainly, one of the advantages that a large entity has is they operate multiple facilities in multiple locations and they've got the expertise that, that, that that geographic diversity affords them. We know how to do what we do. Certainly, we send our people out for a lot of training. They participate in all the professional organizations. They are exposed to all the current state-of-the-art knowledge that's out there. So I would not for any second want to say that our staff is not as competent as anybody else, but I would say that folks who are operating in multiple locations certainly have the benefit of that experience and they always can bring that to the table. Again, that was the reason we went with SunTex for the marina instead of expanding it ourselves and deciding to operate is we knew that they had a broader reach and level of, of expertise than we had locally. And so I think that's what you get when you look at any of the larger vendors, if you're looking for operate, you know, operate and maintain, if you're looking for those efficiencies and not just in build it and get it done and finance it and all that other stuff. So again, it goes back to that menu of what you want to buy. If you want to buy the full package, you know, then yeah, you want somebody who has the demonstrated ability to operate and, and achieve efficiencies. And that's something they should be able to demonstrate if they've taken over any other private facility or public facilities to show you how they have increased, you know, uh, volume at less cost or what have you. That should be part of that evaluation process and how we score them and how we look at them as we go through this.
Okay, so maybe when we're looking at, um, someone to partner with, they would bring to us some of the efficiencies that they would be able to provide.
And they should be able to demonstrate to you, to your, to your satisfaction, if you look at, you know, given, given XYZ city that was previously delivering water at a cost of, you know, ten dollars a thousand, and now they're doing it five dollars a thousand. They should be able to demonstrate to you where they have already achieved those operating efficiencies and reduced costs. Now, the question becomes, and you pointed this out, can you reduce costs enough that they can now pull ten to fifteen percent profit off the top and still deliver it to the residents at a reduced cost? You know, and that's, that's where the challenge comes in.
Yeah, I'm not saying that in, in any of these charts I'm looking at, I'm not seeing where, where the rates went down.
Yeah.
Trying to achieve because people are crying about the rates. You know, you're going to build a big and narrow facility, um, and, and we haven't even repaired the pipes that this now new facility, what water is going to be flowing through. Um, there's just going to be some, some challenges. I just don't see where the end user is going to get the decrease that I think we all are looking for. But we're definitely going to see it on the capital improvement.
Well, and I think that may speak to why, as PFM pointed out, other municipalities have gone through this process. And at the very end, they decided to walk away from it because the hope for savings are, are just simply not there. When they do their, their, their in-depth review, they realize that it's not a significant enough delta to justify giving up, you know, some of that level of control that you have over the system. So again, that's where it really comes in, the evaluation process of, of looking at where they rank, what our investment is and, um, and, and what we're having to sacrifice in terms of control in order to get that.
Sure. And I, I think one thing we need to pay attention to as a commission when we start getting some numbers from a P three is that we already have taken into consideration the debt that we will have to take out to pay for the, you know, the water mains, the lines, all that other stuff that's not in consider, that's not being considered in Five Ash. So, you know, when we say our water rates are going up five percent a year, that's already to include everything we're doing, not Five Ash. So we need to make sure that when we look at the final numbers, we're comparing everything that we are doing currently to improve our infrastructure and then add Five Ash to it and then see where that, that level is at.
And I think that's a key part is we have to look at the, I, I, what I would suggest is that we look at our current, uh, rate studies and we extrapolate out from that and we incorporate the costs of, of doing Five Ash on our own. So if we're looking at currently five percent rate increases, to your point, Commissioner, we may be looking at ten percent rate increases to afford the replacement of Five Ash on our own. So that may already be baked in, you know?
Three years at nine percent is what Santac gave us, John, the last thing. So.
Right. That's about what I would figure, just ballpark.
And then, so we need to compare that to what they would do, including our current debt that we have to take on for the, the, the other stuff, not, not Five Ash. All right. Okay, good.
All right. Any more questions?
Mayor, what's the, what's the date this is going to, we're going to revisit this as a commission?
Back in November. It'll be back in November.
Hopefully, the first meeting in November.
November five. Okay.
Mayor?
Thank you.
It's, it's not November five, it'd be November third.
No, we pushed it, no, we pushed our meeting away from Election Day.
Oh, right, right, right. I'm sorry, because of Election Day, I'm sorry.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think this would be a great presentation also for a group like the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations, maybe knock out a lot of associations at one time and just get everyone up to speed and just, just a thought.
Well, certainly one of several places. Uh, I mean, it, it depends on, you know, the time that our folks have to go to all the different associations, but your point is well taken. We could start with them and then go to others.
Infrastructure, yeah. Infrastructure, and I would really prefer that all of our residents get the same presentation because what I may explain to my neighbors may be different than what you've explained. So I think we really need a citywide Zoom-type thing that people can tap into also. So we all get the same information and, and we can show the recording or presentation also.
I would also, I would also add perhaps a Tower Forum and Fort Lauderdale Forum.
Look, in this virtual world, we don't have to have a specific meeting for each group. Why don't we have between now and November? Yeah, November fifth. Let's have two meetings, two citywide meetings that everyone's open to attend.
I agree.
Yeah, you're right. It's, we're in a Zoom world now, so, okay.
So who, who's taking the lead on that? Chris, is that something you, you'll take the lead on?
Our office will, yes.
Okay, great. So two, now then. Okay, so I think that's good. And then I guess if we want, I don't feel the need to have other meetings outside of that. I guess if we just have questions, we can reach out to Sergio or John in the meantime. Okay, cool.
Very good. Okay, uh, thank you, everyone, for your, uh, being here today. The folks in Pennsylvania, Sergio, everybody, thank you for giving us the initial, uh, presentation regarding this. We need to move forward quickly on this as our water plant, uh, is starting to, uh, show its age, we'll put it that way. Business two, enterprise resource planning project status update, Chris?
Yeah, so I'll start this one, then I'll hand this one over to Andrew, um, to facilitate. It was asked a couple of meetings ago to have an update on our ERP implementation. And, uh, I'll just turn it over to Andrew to start that presentation and then we'll be prepared to answer questions as questions come up. So Andrew, is the floor is yours?
Okay, thank you, Chris. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Andrew Parker, I T S Director. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present the status update on the ERP project today. With the assistance of a consultant who's on the phone with me now, I'll be presenting a few slides with the hope of answering most of your questions. However, at the end of the presentation, we'll open it up for additional questions. As I transitioned into my role in late December, I started my own assessment of the project. And I do understand the gravity of the situation that we're faced after my own assessment. I do understand the impact of the payments made by the city and the partial results, uh, to show for it. Wanted to make it clear that I am taking this opportunity to move the project, uh, forward very seriously with the intent of executing and all the corrective actions required. I also intend on maintaining a close relationship, uh, which is one of the breaking points in the first attempt with the related departments and the city manager's office to bring this project to a successful, uh, completion. As you're all aware, because of various project implementation challenges, the ERP project was placed on hold in December of last year. The reason for placing a project on hold was to allow the city's leadership team to obtain a clear, unbiased understanding of the project challenges and the requirements to move forward. To obtain that perspective on the project, a third-party independent ERP consulting company, Panorama Consulting Group, was hired to perform an assessment of the project and report on the challenges and provide recommendations on a path forward. A copy of the final report was submitted to the commission via the memo from the city manager's office on July, uh, twenty-fourth. Uh, so I hope you, you've all received that, uh, memo. On the call with us today is Steve Diddy with Panorama Consulting. Steve is the gentleman that conducted the assessment. So Steve will be presented a high-level summary of his report. I will then present a high-level, uh, plan to move the project forward to a successful completion. So at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Steve. Uh, Steve, you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, good afternoon, everybody. I'm happy to be here today to present the, just a high-level summary of, of our assessment as Andrew described. We were engaged, just a little bit on, on my background first, um, twenty-five years plus involved in ERP implementation projects just like this. So I've had senior roles at, at firms like IBM, Rice Waterhouse and Accenture, and more recently now with Panorama Consulting Group. Panorama Consulting is a boutique consulting firm based in Denver and specializes in the review and assessment of, I would say troubled projects like this. We also do, uh, uh, software selections. We do implementation oversight or IV and V roles on projects. We do project rescues and we also do expert witness work. So I've obviously been retained and engaged in several high-profile ERP litigation matters across the country. Uh, so it brings that experience to, to bear. And so what our scope of this assessment was to review the, uh, the status of the current project efforts and through my lens, looking at objectively, uh, all the work product that was developed by the combined teams, looking at the governance structure, looking at the, the composition and the skillset of both the city project team members and project management, as well as the vendor consultants and their project management. Looking at specifically the deliverables that were developed and reviewed and, and, and delivered, uh, along the way on the project. And then looking at specifically what, um, assessing really where, where the, the project stands at the moment and determining what specific things need to be finished or completed in order for a successful project launch. And so what we did was we put all that very detailed information together, um, in the report that we submitted in July. There's a number of, of, um, of things we talked about in detail. We worked with the O M B group on the budget information. We looked at the, with the project team members, we had detailed interviews with, with everybody involved and we came away with a, a comprehensive assessment for the effort. So the next bullet there, we did cite, there were several significant accomplishments that were, that were, uh, delivered on the project. Notably, the, the ERP software was, was acquired. So all the licensing and, and necessary equipment to run the software, run the system was, was purchased, as well as the IT infrastructure was purchased and in place. And that's not insignificant because there's several servers and there's several hardware components that weren't in existence or could not be leveraged and required really by the, by the vendor's, uh, infrastructure to support the system. So that, that was a major endeavor and that's, that's in place today. And the software is running in place on the city's infrastructure and it's running successfully, uh, from a background standpoint. The budgeting module was, was substantially implemented. So that, that was put in place this year or late last year. And, and my understanding is successfully input in use, in operating use, uh, for this, for this, uh, this past year's cycle and continues to be a, um, uh, uh, enhancement to what they were using before. And then finally, uh, we did note there was substantial progress, significant progress done by the combined team on the requirements definition work, the initial design of the systems, the functional and technical applications. There is a conversion work, which was, you know, mapping and executing and building conversion programs to move the, the data from the, the city's legacy systems, which were, which are, you know, old and aging and, uh, in, into the new and for vendor system environment. And there's a number of, you know, amount of configuration that's been done and, uh, and in place. So there, there's been substantial, substantial work done in something that is, is going to be leveraged when, you know, when we restart the project. I wanted just to stop for a second and say, what, what really happened was that the teams, uh, began the testing phase in that October, November, or, I mean, August, September, October timeframe in twenty nineteen and encountered a lot of, a lot of, um, software bugs that were really too, too significant to overcome and, and would put the, the system in, in serious risk if they decided to go live with. So that was, that was a trigger for the project. And what we did was, uh, during the scope of our assessment, we looked at those bugs. We looked at the defects that were identified and we traced them back throughout the project to understand really the, the source and root cause of why they were occurring. And, and what we did, what we uncovered, and I, I see this in, in, in almost every assessment that I do, is that, that there were requirements that were missed. Um, initially, there was a major upgrade that was done that was not contemplated in the original agreement by the teams, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And, and there was obviously missing components in the design of the system such that when the teams started testing, they uncovered that there were certain business, business requirements that were incorporated or incorporated accurately into the design of the system and, and, and subsequently wasn't built and configured appropriately to meet the, the city requirements. So then, when the system began to be, to be tested against those requirements and really expected to perform the, the city's functions in a, in, in a, uh, flawless way, everything seemed to be, uh, it, it did not perform and it, and it encountered a number of significant issues. So that's, that's really what triggered the, the challenge, the challenges. And, and the bottom of the slide, you know, we did hone in then, you know, on the challenges that we uncovered and the kind of the sources for why the, why the project is where it is today. And really two or three big ones. And the, uh, the, the first bit, the middle one I wanted to start with is a version change from version ten to eleven. This is a, this, this occurred back in early twenty eighteen because the product started in late twenty seventeen and very early on in, in the project lifecycle. But, and but what, what, what's important to note, though, is that version eleven was just released into the market at that time. And it was, it was really relatively new. It was untested and, and we didn't, the, the combined teams, notably the, the vendor team, didn't have the right consultants on, on the project that had that experience, previous experience implementing version eleven in a public sense, public entity like the city. So that, that was a big, a big challenge. Um, it involved a number of things that had to be redesigned because the, the team had, um, performed and, and started to build on the version ten. And then when the version eleven came out and was upgraded, a lot of the fundamental components had to be redesigned because it was essentially a, a new product and different. So, so that set the team back quite, quite significantly, both in time, in cost, in, in, in knowledge. And, and that, that's really what contributed to, um, the consultant turnover. They realized that, you know, the, the consultants they had placed on the original project were well-versed in version ten. But when, when, when version eleven came out, there was a significant gap in that knowledge. And so they replaced a number of their consultants, some successfully, some not so successfully on the project. And there was a really, a, a real knowledge gap on the consultant side to be able to lead and guide the city on the new technical components of version eleven and overcome a number of these issues. Uh, and then as importantly, the city had engaged a, a contracted project manager to hold the vendor accountable, hold the city accountable, ensure that the team, that the product was being driven. to hold the vendor accountable, hold the city accountable, ensure that the team, that the product was being driven authoritatively and in an experienced way. And what we assessed when we we looked at that particular role is that particular role and that an individual did not possess the the required experience in ERP implementation systems and certainly didn't understand the the vendor software as as I would expect him him to do. And thus, his role was diminished throughout and not able to really hold the vendor, hold the team accountable and review deliverables in a way that I would expect and and call out things that were either incomplete or inaccurate and and really get caught, you know, caught with early detection of what these issues were. So what what we really realized was that some of these deliverables and some of this work slipped through these early phases and then got caught up in the testing phase, as I said before, and it resulted in a number of these bugs that that the that the city couldn't overcome. And then finally, there's amidst, we talked about the the review that we did of the project work, work products, and I said, no, I'm sorry, go back, please, to the, I'm on the last bullet. The in fact, I did say the worst, despite substantial configuration and design work done, there still remains a large portion of of that work to be finished. And and I I say that because there was, you know, there's still some design work, there's still some obviously digital testing work, and there's actual real work that has to be properly planned and resourced and executed to be successful. I think the last thing I'll say on this, our overall overall recommendation, if you haven't read that, is that we really true believe that the vendor software can successfully be deployed to meet the city's requirements. We really do. And we recommend that that the city continue with the M four software and leverage the investment that they've already made in this effort. But that but these challenges are significant enough, and Andrew's going to talk about that in a minute, to that need to be overcome to be successful. With that, I'll stop and and your question or turn it over to Andrew.
But let me ask, let me ask you this. Well, what's the city commission's role here?
This is really just an update. This is an update as to, you know, we've had had discussions along the way as to when this was going to execute, when it was going to implement. Why is it off track? Why is it costing you more money? So this was just intended to be an update to the commission on progress of the project.
Does anyone have any questions of these folks? Okay, thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for the update, and keep up the good work, and hopefully, we can launch this with success real soon. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to hear from Andrew on his implementation plan? Are you good at this point?
Andrew.
Back at a different point.
Well, let Andrew wrap it up then.
Andrew, go ahead and wrap it up for us.
Okay, I'll wrap it up pretty quick. But to to say the least, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, to address the issues that were identified in the assessment report. Again, the key things that I'll be doing here is to work closely with the related departments, finance, HR, and the city manager's office to make sure that we take the necessary corrective actions. And also to make sure we select the appropriate project manager with the right experience. That was something that was very lacking in in the first attempt. And we intend to do so. We've hired Steve and his firm to act as the interim project manager at the moment. He's also assisted us to source the appropriate staff members for project management and backfill. And we're going to do a better job at that this time, in the sense that we're going to pre-screen and interview selected candidates before we hire someone for that role. So I'll summarize it there to say that we're going to take the all the corrective actions that's required to make sure that we move this project forward in a successful way. The the last thing I'll also say that we are going to do, that's a big difference from the first approach, is to take a phased approach. Instead of going for the light switch, the on-off, we'll be trying to move this forward in a two-phase process. However, as we are in the detailed planning phase at the moment, working with the various city staff in in finance and HR, we may also look at breaking those phases down into smaller phases with the intent of reducing the risk associated with trying to go live with all modules at the same time. And in that way, we'll also achieve successes along the way. So those are the highlights of the corrective actions that will be taken and with the intent of making this attempt a successful one.
Okay, great. All right, thank you so much, folks. Moving on to business three, this is a discussion on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, new requirement to include one elected official. Has anyone given any thought to who would like to be involved in the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee? Don't all jump at once.
I didn't have anybody yesterday jump at it. So tonight, at the tonight's meeting with the ordinance that's in second read, if it approves tonight, which I anticipated will, since this is a new requirement of state statute, a member, an elected member will need to be identified to be appointed to this committee.
Ben, is this not something you'd be interested in?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something I'm interested in. Just there's, you know, I've got a lot of different committees I'm part of right now. We all are. And then my other thought was, I know this is something I've I've spent a lot of time on, and I didn't know if having someone else be part of this, it could help, you know, broaden the kind of force behind our push towards affordable housing and so forth, but.
Well, there are only five of us. So if no one else wants to do it, I guess this is going to fall on me, which I I'm perfectly happy to participate in it. Affordable housing has always been a priority of mine, so. And because we have some affordable housing issues in our community, then, you know, happy to participate. But but and I strongly advise anyone else who's interested to please step forward, otherwise, you know, I'm more than happy to participate as the city's representative.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. When we get items like this before us, it might be helpful if we can get within the camp sort of a listing of what everyone's doing in terms of boards and committees that we're serving on, and then we could we could shoot for some equity. That might be helpful if we see that maybe.
That was said to you.
We got that?
You should in there. Yeah, you got that.
Oh, you know what? I apologize. Here it is, Exhibit Two. Yes, you're right. Thank you.
Steve, I actually wanted to edit that for the record, because I'm now serving on Lotter Trail along with Commissioner Sorenson, so that's another committee. TMA, I believe, is really no longer happening, so I'm not sure if that needs to be listed under any commissioner.
It is happening.
It is happening.
Is it going to continue to happen?
I don't know.
I I thought we made some changes where TMA maybe not continue, but I'll let Chris answer.
Would you have any interest on this? I see your sole assignment is MPO.
I don't have an interest in it.
Okay. All right, folks, we'll 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 vote on it tonight, and if no one else steps forward.
One other, just kind of somewhat related procedural thing. You know, in in our evening meetings, you know, almost all speakers are given a time allocation, said, hey, you've got three minutes to speak, or you've got 10 minutes to make your presentation and so forth. I think it could be helpful for us all and for the speakers in terms of efficiency and understanding. If we just gave them a time allocation at the beginning and kind of said, okay, for your presentation, you know, you'll have, you know, 15 minutes for your presentation. We'll try to hold our questions, and then you'll have a question and answer afterwards, so that they kind of have an expectation of the time amount we do and so forth. Would that be something we could do?
Well, it's going to change from from item to item. I mean, I kind of thought we already did that.
No, we aren't doing that.
You know. No, when a person, when a person has a presentation, for example, if a developer has a project and they have a presentation, we assign them a number of minutes from the beginning of their presentation, and then they reserve a certain number of minutes afterwards to wrap up. So that's always been our process.
Exactly.
Is that something, is there something?
Yeah, so that's great. And what I'm suggesting is we should do that in conference meetings. So this afternoon, telling presenters, hey, you've got, you know, 15 minutes to present, then we're going to do questions and answers afterwards.
All right, well, you know, I kind of watch the clock just to make sure. I hate to cut off people, especially since there are people and you know, and they're doing this for our sake, to educate us, and they and so, I mean, it's only 4:15, we're kind of finished right now. The city manager has any?
One topic we need to do in a private, in the shade meeting. But then we have OPEB, but that's not good.
I just think we can be more efficient. I don't, why do we need all the people time when the case?
I know, but I hate to cut people off when, you know, like if there's like in the water plant discussion, if they were only half-finished, you know, we lose out, because we're trying to educate ourselves on the options.
Extend the time. You can say, okay, you've passed 15 minutes, let's go five more and, you know, 10 more.
All right. All right, we'll see how that works. Okay, okay. We can see how that works.
All right.
The city manager, you have three minutes.
Why don't we, well, let me confirm with the city attorney real quick. If we adjourn the conference, do OPEB, we can convene for the purposes of unsolicited proposal discussion. Just because that meeting can happen in the in the shade because of the statute.
Yes, unless there's other business.
There's no other business on that one. So you can go ahead and adjourn the.
So there's no other business for these city commission conference meeting?
Well, just to let the commission know, one one item, to let you know that a date has been proffered by Broward County to have the next UDPA meeting, so I just want you to all to start thinking about putting that on your calendar. Our meetings happen to line up in October, where we meet the same days that they do, and so they've offered up October 20th. So please plan that we will meet, and we'll obviously send notice to you, but plan that we will meet in advance of our conference meeting as the UDPA with Broward County. That's my really only announcement.
Where are we meeting?
It'll be virtual.
Oh, virtual, okay. Okay. All right, so the city commission conference meeting is hereby adjourned, and thank you, everybody. Now we'd like to convene the the OPEB board meeting. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas. Vice Chair Glassman.
Here.
I don't see.
He's there, he's there.
Is he there?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Sorenson. Chair Trent House.
Here. BR one, other post, post employment benefits trust quarterly investment report for the period ending June 30th, 2020. One person to sign up to speak, Marcella Todd. Marcella, are you there? Is Marcella Todd there? She signed up for a couple of things, and she wasn't here. Okay, anybody have any questions regarding this? Okay. We don't have to take any action on this, right?
No, it was just a report.
Just information, right?
We have our financial people still on the call if you have any questions or want to present.
Okay. Moving on to M one, motion approving the minutes for the June 2nd, 2020. Other post-employment benefits trust board, so here a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved second.
Do we count every I and cross every T, Vice Mayor?
You certainly did. Thank you. We did. Excellent job, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Chair Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas. Chair Trent House.
Yes, and the and the minutes are now approved. M two, motion adopting the fiscal year 2021 other post-employment benefits trust fund budget. Anyone have any questions? None? Would you please call the roll? Oh, no, do I hear a motion to approve?
Move.
I hear a second. Thank you.
Vice Chair Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson. Commissioner Moritas. Chair Trent House.
Yes. Is there any other business of the other post-employment best adjourned? We now move into a shade meeting, which which to discuss and respond to an unsolicited proposal. We could take a five-minute break before we go into it, and please close your curtains and shut your doors at home, so no one else is listening.
So for organization here, do you need, I'm not talking to the city attorney, do you need anybody of your staff to stay on?
No. No, me and we have the court reporter that should be on. That should be Lisa. I think it's.
Yeah.
There we go.
We'll take a five-minute break.
Take a five-minute break while people fall off the call.
The recording has stopped.